Okay. The work session for the Portland Public Schools School Board for February nineteenth is called to order. We're going to, I don't have a script, so it's gonna be a little ragged. So, we are going to have a, it's a pretty full work session. We're gonna be talking about multiple pathways, location analysis, bond reports from the Bond Accountability Committee, and also from staff, and some beginning information about the process sequence and timeline for enrollment and program balancing. We are going to, because there's a lot of interest, especially among students in this, in several of these topics, we're gonna have an extended public comment period for students. We have asked for two students per program that is affected, that's part of the Multiple Pathways or Benson. And normally for work sessions, we take adult public comment at the end of the session. This time, we're gonna do it at the beginning. So, let's start with public comments. Ms. Houston, do we have people signed up?
Yes, we have a total of six, five of Winter students. And our first two students are Tripp Burnett and Chi Wen Hui.
Okay, and I just want to remind everybody, kind of, go on up, rules of the road for public comments. For work sessions, you have two minutes. At, at the beginning, the light will flash green. Halfway through, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will come on and a buzzer will sound. And since we have a lot of people who wanna make commentary tonight, we're gonna ask for your cooperation in, in sticking with the two minutes. The only other thing, public comment is, especially for work sessions, the public comment is intended to be focused on the topics for the work session. And we would ask that all the comments remain respectful. Anybody who has issues, personnel issues that they want to address should be contacting the superintendent's office. Okay, so, take it away.
For the record, my name is Tripp Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T. I come before the school board today to speak on behalf of Alliance at Benson. I will start with reiterating a statement made by many Alliance students, teachers, and parents. We need to be part of Benson. There's no doubt that the Alliance program helps and is very successful in allowing kids to graduate. Being on the Benson campus allows us to be successful in getting to and from school. But because of our rooms at Benson, the facilities we have are very lackluster. We have shared rooms. One example is the PE room is sharing space with the English class, which is also sharing space with our techs, tech class. Our office and main classroom area is basically a bunch of high-wall cubicles. It always transfers from room to room. With an improved and adapted learning environment, Alliance would be even more successful than it already is. In addition to needing a viable campus, we also need proper funding. With better funding, we would be able to expand the programs that we already have and allow many of our classes to exist. This program is one of the most, if not the most, successful programs I've ever heard or seen. If it were not for Alliance, I probably wouldn't even try graduating a high school in the first place. It saddens me to know that you did not consider including us in the Benson Rema Plan in the first place. But I could thank you for that, because it has allowed us to connect as a stronger community. So in your future talks on the Benson campus, I want you to always consider Alliance and the collective of voices that make up the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chi Wen He. I am from China. I speak Chinese Mandarin. I am a PISA student. That is Portland International Scholar Academy. I come to the United States for a half year. This is my first year at PISA. I am going to speak my language.
PISA has a lot of students from different high schools in Portland. We are a big family. We learn English together. We learn a lot at PISA, like algebra, physics, history. Here, what helps us the most is how we understand English. Now, we could understand if people talk slower, simple, you know, we could understand. We can use English and have a simple, basic conversation. That helps us a lot. So, we think PISA's location is very good, because it's centrally located, it's close to the MAX line. So, in the future, students at PISA needs a place like Benson. Because the location is good, we want to have a big classroom. We could carry out a lot of activities, like physical education, art, and things like that. We want to be able to feel all the activities, you know, the, we could have fun and we can get the fun out of racing. Okay, we learned from somebody at PISA, you know, we've gained a lot of confidence, that made us believe that, you know, through our effort, we can go to a college that we always wanted. So, makes us feel like, you know, if we have a dream to go to our dream college, you know, it will not be a dream. This is something that is totally attainable. So, that gives us a lot of motivation to learn. So, we want the future PISA student would have a geographical location, you know, such as Benson, and we could learn. We could learn and we could obtain a lot of fun through learning and let learning become some motivation to learn.
Thank you for listening to the PISA student speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Alfredo Garcia and Kiana Malsal.
Hi, my name is Alfredo Garcia. I am from Guatemala. I am PISA student, and I speak three languages, like Quechua, Spanish, and English. Now, I'm speaking my language, it is Spanish. Este programa son para los estudiantes nuevos que es en Estados Unidos de América, que vienen de diferentes países y que no saben hablar inglés.
This program is for new students that come to the United States of America. They come from different countries and they don't know how to speak English in this country. This program brings support and help, for example, to activities in English. It explains stuff in Spanish better, so that we can better do this. And this is, we're talking about PISA, sorry. Here at PISA, Portland International School Academy, we do lots of fun activities, and they are diverse. We also speak very intellectually with the teachers. I'm a representative of PISA, and since they are thinking of remodeling the school here at Benson, we are wanting for PISA, this program, to stay, stay at Benson. This is a great program, and it's very adequate for what we do. But we would like to add some physical education, art classes, and a gymnasium for us to do more stuff. These are materials that we don't have, but we're wanting them for future students. Like I mentioned before, I would like for PISA to stay here in Portland. It is the first program that we have for all the students in high school. PISA is located in the middle of Portland, so it is the best place. It's also around all the high schools. So it is the best place, because it's not just in the middle of Portland, but we have access to buses and MAXes to get there. This is my opinion about PISA, and thank you very much for all your attention.
Thank you. Gracias.
Good evening. Luke Hotchkiss, H-O-T-C-H-K-I-S-S. I teach construction at Benson High School, alumni of that school as well. Thank you for your chance to talk tonight. I read through kind of the, the report tonight that we're gonna go through. I think it's, I'm not super stoked about going to Marshall, but I think that the opinion of a lot of the CTE teachers at the school is that that's a reasonable plan that can achieve success. We're all not believing necessarily that we can do a remodeling place in just three years. And so, I don't, I don't like that plan. I think it, I understand it, and I don't think there'll be a huge amount of fight. I don't want to speak for everybody, but a few teachers that I've talked to, we don't, we don't love it, but we, we understand why. And so, that's, that's, that's one part of what I wanted to say tonight. I'm more concerned tonight about like the, the long-term future of the Multiple Pathways programs at, at Benson High School. I saw how you've kind of distinguished in some of the plans tonight between like PISA and Pioneer to be integrated into the school, and schools like Alliance to be potentially have their own site. I think that the plan to have, build them their own building in the parking lot makes a lot of sense to me, because they're still at our central location, but they're distinguished somewhat from the school, so they can have their own spaces designed for them. It's not, I think it's important for future business partners for the school, that we want to make it to be attractive for them for the next hundred years and a leader in CTE education, that there's some distinction between what they're, between what they're investing in. I kind of have a personal example of one of my students who I taught for three years. She went to Alliances last year for less than a semester and made up, I think, over a year's worth work of credits. And she, she told me that if Alliance wasn't right at Benson, where it was so easy to go there, that she would have probably got her stuff together a little bit, because it was so easy to fall back on that option. She's a great kid. She's one of my hardest working students in the class. She just has a really hard time coming to school every time. So, is that my end of the time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have our last two students, Kiana Malsal and Carlos Batres.
Hello, everybody. I'm, my name is Kiana, and I'm from Micronesia. Um, I just wanted to thank to all the teen bands that helped me for, or can help, all that stuff. And I really appreciate it, what you guys did. And, yeah, thank you.
She's a little nervous.
It's okay.
So my name is Norrell Harper.
How old is your baby? Uh, he's three, three months. Yeah.
So, Kiana is one of our new moms. My name is Norrell Harper. I'm a school social worker with the Teen Parent Services Program. Kiana's one of our new moms, and I wanted to just talk about, I think, Teen Parent Services. And so, do you use your baby and childcare sponsored by Teen Parent? What are some of the other things we do with Teen Parent?
You're gonna say, oh, help me, uh, to take care of my baby, or stuff. Help me to, take me to the, to his appointment, my appointment, when I was born, and how that stuff. I appreciate what you guys did.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another speaker? Okay. No more speakers? Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. So I think we're going to, we have quite a lot to cover tonight, so I think we're gonna launch right in. And the first topic is Multiple Pathways to Graduation, discussion of possible locations.
So, directors, our deputy superintendents are gonna take the lead on tonight's presentation. Clearly, this involves both the operational side of the house, as well as our instructional programming. They're gonna be presenting staff's compilation of thinking and analysis based partly, or based on a lot of input that we heard. And I also want, want to appreciate once again all of the MPG programs that I did have an opportunity to meet with over this past month. So thank you for, for your feedback and input, which was shared with our directors, as well as staff. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Claire Hertz and Dr. Curtis.
And we are just waiting for the projector to come on, please. This particular computer just lost power.
Okay, apparently Director Bailey cannot leave the room ever again.
So, we'll go ahead and start with the introduction while we're waiting. And tonight, we're going to give you an overview of the work that has been done on the anal, location analysis for the Multiple Pathways to Graduation programs, currently located at Benson, the Benson campus. Lovely. Thank you so much for your help. So, Deputy Superintendent Yvonne Curtis and myself, Claire Hertz, will have been working for several months with looking at the programming summary and why we are bringing forward this recommendation to, with Area Superintendent Joe LaFontaine and Area Director Karina Wolf will be sharing information there. Our Facilities and Operations Officer, Dan Young, and our Project Manager Jen Soem, will, and our Architect Joe Etcheveri.
Etcheveri.
Etcheveri. We'll be discussing the options of the facilities and the architecture for that work. And then we'll come back with next steps, and then have a question and answer in discussion period with you. So the board gave us a charge to hold listening sessions for Multiple Pathways programs, and with the, for the board and superintendent. And beginning, I believe it was before the holiday season, we brought instruction and operations together and, and after those listening sessions, and mapped out a pathway of where we wanted to head. We're at a turning point now, and here tonight, we're sharing our recommendation with the board.
So I wanted to just take a minute and celebrate that coming together on this project since the last board meeting has been really a shift in our culture. We've had so much siloed work before, and as we fill in all the leadership positions, we're coming closer and closer together. So, since the last board meeting, and with your charge, we had the opportunity to bring all of the principals that, our principals over the Multiple Pathways programs, PISA, Pioneer program at Benson, as well as the Benson principal, with the OSM team to hear from one another what had been happening over the last three years, to have each of the principals describe the programs and what it was doing for students, and then the needs of the program, programs. And then we had the opportunity, as the, we were getting the feedback from the listening sessions, we were able to put all of that together. And so we had all these great minds in one room, looking at the whole picture and saying, if we're building and going to recommend how to serve all of these communities that have been currently at Benson, what is the very best recommendation we can make, considering all of the variables? And there were a lot of variables. So you have some information on the scenarios we considered, which you'll hear more about tonight. What I'm going to do is let you know that we believe we've landed on a win-win situation for all of the programs at Benson, and that our recommendation for the transition, while the construction is going on, we think is the safest. It saves money, and it enables us to complete the project sooner. So, we put all of it together in one recommendation. Just to review quickly what the engagement, community engagement process was, you can see the dates here. Oh, I moved to my computer, not yours. The dates and each of the programs, when those sessions were held. And then just to summarize a few of the themes that we heard, several of them around the learning environment itself, the needs for a lot of the programs to be in spaces that were more therapeutic spaces, in a smaller school. They needed more classrooms, but they needed private offices that had space for confidential meetings. But students wanted to feel safe and part of a community that was smaller than, than their experiences in a compre, large comprehensive high school. But they also, as you heard tonight, wanted to have some choice with electives, and also physical education. In terms of the facility and access, we heard loud and clear, number one was it needs to be centrally located, it needs to be close to all of the different transportation lines and types of transportation. They also need childcare, and some of the programs need to have separate entrances, depending on how the program serves the students, and sometimes the student's whole family, like you meant tonight. They need a cafeteria and access to a kitchen, so they could prepare their own food, and they need a food pantry. They also requested that they have separate restrooms, enough of them, that would be for all the students, but that would be separate from staff, which we have in all of our schools. So a lot of these are fair things to ask about. So, we brought together the principals and the school modernization team, and reviewed all of the pieces that I talked about, and created some scenarios. So we're gonna transition to another team, Dan and Jen, that are gonna talk about the scenarios we put together.
So Jen Soem and Joe Etcheveri will be joining us up here, and we'll walk through the, the scenario, the recommended scenario here fairly quickly. Just wanted to, to make a quick comment about how the process has been a fast-track process, but it's also been a very collaborative and a very iterative process. So, we've worked very well together with the educators to come up with different options, and I think tonight, we're providing a recommendation for the option that best serves all students.
As Dr. Curtis mentioned, we interviewed all Benson co-located schools, offices, and programs recently in order to start the compiling their programming needs for a new facility or an existing facility. And then with subsequent direction from our steering committee, the team compiled a number of scenarios for review, ranging from concept one, the team compiled a number of scenarios for review, ranging from Concept 1, 2, 3, and 4. These vary from Scenario 1 means no co-located programs. Scenario 2 focuses on everyone co-located in the existing master plan. To 3, the more autonomous programs located offsite. And 4, the more autonomous programs in schools located in a separate new building at the parking lot that is part of the Portland Public Schools properties. Then we reviewed that with all administrators and our principals and then we ranked those and those are all in your packets, the results of those rankings. So I'm going to turn this over to Joe to talk a little more specifically about the staff recommendation, which is Scenario 4B.
Good evening, Board. Good to see you. So we were, as Jen mentioned, we were asked to put together some scenarios that looked at how these programs could work onsite. And what you're seeing here is Scenario 4B. One of the primary elements of this scenario is that you have in the adjacent parking lot, which is kitty corner to the Benson site and adjacent to the Parks and Rec Fields, Buckman Field, is a new building that would support the independent schools. What we kind of heard through our listening sessions, there's two main categories here. We have those schools within a school, which include DART Clinton and Alliance and Reconnection Services. And then you have those programs that are more integrated with Benson, that students are taking classes at Benson and they become a resource to those students. And so this scenario provides a separate autonomous building for those programs that need that ability to have a separate entry and a place that's a little more protected and a little more autonomous. This scenario also, I think, is providing the space for those more integrated programs. You see there PISA, Virtual Scholars, night summer school offices, Pioneer. Those are in the second floor of the main building, front entry building, so they're not far from the main entrance. And they are kind of a key resource for the school master plan as it was previously reviewed and approved in December. The other thing to note in this scenario is that we've, by placing those programs on that second level, we've displaced some classrooms that were going to be used by Benson. And this scenario adds additional classrooms to make up for that displacement. So you end up with the same design capacity for Benson that was previously reviewed and approved in our master plan in December. The other component to this, this version is in the lower level, where we were originally looking at some scenarios that placed some of the programs there, we've maintained that for Benson use. So that would be CTE or performing arts space that could be used by Benson that would support the shared meeting room, the multipurpose room, and which is also directly below and adjacent to the theater space on the main level. So I think in summary, what that does is it minimizes some of the impact of Benson by maintaining a lot of the program areas we had planned for Benson. It provides the spaces for those integrated programs on the second level. It provides an independent location for those independent schools. And it, it basically results in the same CTE space that was originally planned for Benson, which is, I think, a positive.
Normally with our documents, you'll see some pretty detailed cost information, specific professional cost estimates and all the assumptions that add up to a total. This has been a very fast process with lots of iterations going through, so we don't have that level of detail yet, but we did want to provide some level of cost estimate detail, even though it's at a preliminary schematic level. So we took into account the new square footage, which would be the building on the parking lot area, the additional classrooms within the Benson building area, as well as potential improvements to swing space sites such as Kenton and Marshall, and also factored in where in the budget we had some costs that we could see some potential savings. So with the scenario of moving all students offsite, we could complete construction quicker and without having as many phases, we can gain efficiency. Now, it's hard to say exactly what that is now, but in the staff report, we made some assumptions about what that ballpark might be. So the total of those improvements, we're looking at about nineteen and a half to thirty-six million dollars is what we see as the total. Our intention is, we come back in March with an updated master plan, is to have more detail around those numbers. Okay, and I think we're going to turn it over to the next team, which I believe is Joe and Karina.
Good evening. We found that this plan actually expands some opportunities for Benson High School students. Number one, it does increase the CTE pathways space. It also honors the current Benson High School student participation in the DAG group. Much of the work had been done well in advance of some of the considerations that we're making for this new addition. Also, it allows for separate school space for Benson High School students so that they have a sustained identity in regards to being Benson students. And it supports, it does support English Language Arts learners and special education students by having that space still assigned inside the main building and giving them direct contact with the student population.
And similarly, supports for multiple pathways are met in this facility design. By adequate, we're no longer, we would no longer be doubled up, teaching two courses with two teachers in the same classroom space. We'd have appropriate science labs for both DART students and Alliance students. And we'd have confidential meeting spaces. We'd have creation of trauma-sensitive spaces. We'd have de-escalation space. We'd have a learning center. Just really enhanced ability to meet a wider range of students' needs. Warm spaces to welcome families. As you know, we welcome more than a thousand families a year at Reconnection Services and so this would provide us an adequate space for families who come district-wide to come to a central location in an appropriate space. And then wraparound services. So we heard a lot, and thank you again, those of you who attended various listening sessions. Many times that the listening sessions part of, and our leaders have brought up, part of what's needed is, you know, showers, laundry, food pantry. What are the wraparound services? How do we have IEP meetings in a confidential space? How do we welcome, you know, just case teams or teams around students? A lot with our community partners, our community partners showed up at the listening sessions as well and our community stakeholders. And so providing space where we can be welcoming to the communities that our families represent. And then academically, so there's been questions about program. So with regard to program, similarly, as you can see, in with the facility space is we've really focused on personalized learning, looking at our project-based learning that we're expanding and through our prep grant as well as CTE options. So we would be able to be near the CTE facilities, having the flexible schedules. Alliance High School at Benson is our day-to-night high school. We would maintain that. We could also maintain appropriate connection as we're scheduling students. Tonight, by the way, is the first night of our second semester for Portland Evening Scholars. Many of our students in this location would be able to maintain right there and if they needed to pick up a night class at Portland Evening Scholars, we'd be able to maintain that flexibility of meeting individual student needs through their scheduling needs. We'd have a childcare for teen parents. And again, that central location, we have a lot of pathways to PCC with our PCC Career Pathways Program and it puts us still in between our Southeast Eighty-Second PCC, our Swan Island and our Cascade Campus. So again, that location helps with our programming. And then one of the things that we are really lacking currently is a space to have whole school gatherings. So whole school gathering, family engagement spaces. And so just having a larger space where the entire school community can come together for things like assemblies, other things that other communities, is kind of a basic, but other communities take for granted that we have not had the privilege of having right now. It's been, we've managed it, but it's been harder. And this way academically, we could get those guest speakers and those things in our space. So there's a lot of things, both facility that meets a facility need, but it also would really enhance our programming. And we strongly believe that it would enhance attendance, retention and graduation. And I think that's us, I think. And I will say that we have the leaders here to answer. I know we have questions and answers. A lot of the leaders are here if there are specific questions. Thanks.
Okay, hello again. Next steps are, I'll go back real quick. And the Benson master plan was approved in December of two thousand and eighteen with two deliverables. One is a location analysis that was to be completed by the end of February and then an updated master plan, I think floor plan by March. And if we were able to hit those deliverables, we'll be able to stay on schedule and start construction and open per the master plan schedule. So the next steps are to finalize the location analysis. We have documents prepared tonight and we have a draft Board resolution as well. And then immediately to turn around, update the master plan based upon that data and come back here in just a few weeks to a work session where we'll review the detailed master plan and then come back for a master plan approval. So those are the immediate next steps. Certain items that are out there on the horizon are being our construction manager, general contractor onboard. We're out procuring that right now. Expect to have that finalized by May. And continue to work as there are some changes here with updating the project schedule and updating the project cost estimate. So that's where we are right now. This is a tool that we use and is in your packets to compare the different scenarios. I think it's twelve or thirteen in total, really based around four primary concepts with variations of them. And this just identifies some of the different variables that were in play. We didn't originally start with this many options. We started with two or three. And then as we worked with the educators and worked with the team, they just, they just expanded and as needs became apparent, they became more detailed and more varied as we moved along. So this is just a tool that's in your packets that might be something we want to reference as we answer questions. And that is it. We're here to answer questions.
Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
Because that may answer my question about with the combination of the multiple pathways programs not including Alliance High School in the current master plan, does that assume that the Benson enrollment would stay the same? And if so, where does that square footage come from to accommodate those programs or, walk me through?
Sure, and you're talking specific to the recommended option 4B?
Yes.
Yes, so some of the spaces that are in the master plan that was approved in, excuse me, in December is occupied by some multiple pathway programs. That's why there's additional classrooms added on into, it's really next to the existing Benson building now. So that allows the capacity to stay at the targeted seventeen hundred. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Did you look at reducing the square footage of the current master plan and thereby reducing the cost as a trade-off with the construction of a standalone building for Alliance?
We looked at a number of options, including some that housed all the programs in Benson. So that would, you know, if any, reduced per se, but kept the same footprint. And what that did is it reduced the capacity size of Benson Polytech. So those were options that were on the table as well as basically taking the additional students, additional programs and putting into that existing footprint, the approved master plan footprint.
And could one assume that the cost there would be the same minus the additional cost for the Alliance building? Or would it?
Yeah, it would be largely the same. The differences would be de minimis.
We're not building a standalone building for these other programs and taking it out of the Benson master plan, correct?
Correct. So Benson Polytech effectively stays whole and these programs are, have additional square footage.
Scott?
So the second one down is the space for future visual and performing arts program. Could you explain?
Sure. The master plan that was approved in December had some caveats to it. One of them was to find some space for additional visual and performing arts. And so you see the options that we believe that there is space to put those additional programs in. We still need some more detail of exactly what those are and where it's going to be, but I think in 4B, we're looking down at the lower level.
Okay, but if we did 4C or 4D, it's like, not going to happen.
Correct. We're just not seeing space for it there.
Another question I have is it's which MPG students would have access to Benson's CTE programs?
Good question. I'm not sure I'm the best one to answer that. I mean, all the amenities are available.
It's our last two speakers. We're walking away. Yeah, so it's, there doesn't appear to be very much integration between any of the programs in Benson right now. Like, is Alliance in a separate building, meaning the Alliance kids never set foot in Benson? Or how are we doing that? Or is that still to be determined?
So I think, so some of that might still be determined. I think one of the things that we've heard loud and clear is that how do we maximize facility usage? If we have, in all of our bond conversations, there's been, there's been conversations about how do we get to a hundred percent utilization? Certainly, we have teachers on any given schedule that would have a prep period, right? Or a variety of things. And so when we look at when would the facility be available and what programs would be available at what time? We have not gotten that far, but there certainly has been conversation around how could students at Alliance High School, in Alliance SMTs with Alliance CTE teachers, would there be benefits or to what degree would there be benefits of that facility? So I think that's a standing and open question. I don't know that there's, it's been finalized.
Can I, can I follow up on that? So that sounds like, to the extent you've contemplated this yet, which it sounds like you're still early days, it sounds like you're, you're talking about alternate usage of space within Benson rather than?
Correct.
Okay, has there been any thought to allowing Alliance or DART students, for that matter, actually plugging into existing programming at Benson? So that you could actually have some level of integration?
So what we heard loud and clear and have heard loud and clear from Alliance students is that as a school community, how do they stay together as a school community? What we have also heard from DART students and DART teachers over time is what's an opportunity or is there opportunity at different points in time when students graduate up with their own programming to take a class or to mainstream? That hasn't been a practice that has happened very often, but it has happened with DART Clinton students at Benson High School. But it's been pretty very, fairly infrequent.
I think these are great questions that we're going to want to explore. Dr. Terry, if you could just hint a little bit about how, what we hope for are some outcomes of our emerging CTE plan. But we want to be respective of the type of customized facility that meets the needs of our multiple pathway students and we also want to make sure that Benson and its CTE programming can continue to grow. But that doesn't mean that they should be mutually exclusive. We're not interested in building sort of a duplicative, small comprehensive, right next doors when there's lots of rich opportunity that could be explored around partnership in many areas, whether it's childcare, physical education, or any other area of visual and performing arts. But can you hint a little bit about, you know, these are questions we're asking ourselves as well?
Absolutely. I think one thing that we need to explore that we haven't yet is that idea of shared FTE. So right now, I think one of the struggles that we're facing and the reason that there's not necessarily a mixture of students and CTE is that we are staffing our Benson CTE programs to meet only the amount of students that are currently at Benson. So if we looked at including the students in other programs, that would just change class sizes and different section needs and affect FTE needs. So that's one of the reasons that I think that there's that problem right now, but absolutely something that we can look at in the future for that opportunity for integration. And especially, I think, as we all know, right, with the really impressive CTE programs at Benson, it would only be better for us to expose more students to that. So the bear at this point is just us looking at scheduling an FTE, but nothing that's out this point is just us looking at scheduling and FTE, but nothing that's out of reach.
So while Benson has a four-year CTE track, the footprint recommended allows for undesignated CTE space to be determined. So that could be an opportunity to design something that maybe an upper grade high school student could get some exploratory in a different kind of pathway. These are all questions that are up for exploration.
And it's one, I think there's a cultural issue that's been a huge barrier and that's not okay with me. And I also don't want to see the, oh, every once in a while it accidentally happens. It just, you know, listening to the students, the MPG students, we want more electives. You know, if you've got that new international student who, student who happens to be a killer violin player, why can't they be in the band at Benson? Or, or, or. And I think it's something we want to try to do as opposed to more the rule of the exception than the exception in terms of.
Absolutely.
And so I don't think it has to be, you know, 20 kids are going to come and overwhelm a class size necessarily, but.
So I think as we reintroduce and build a visual and performing arts department at Benson, these are exactly the kinds of opportunities that would be rich for some integration among programs to collaborate.
I have a question about the timing. So I want to thank everybody for listening to the students and I think coming up with a, I think a positive solution for both Benson and all the other programs. I'm interested in making sure that we continue to have things coupled together so that we have, so Benson is, you know, often running is that we are sort of figuring out how to accelerate the work on this piece so that we are doing all the work at one time. So it's the Benson Project and which is composed of both the Benson High School, but then the separate piece. So I'm looking at the resolution and I think there's just some ways that we can, I think, really be clear that we view this as sort of one body of work, not that there's a trailing project that may drop off. So for example, when we talk about the full faith and credit for Benson, just to be clear that that would also extend to the multiple pathways program. Because right now the way it looks like, well, maybe Benson could go and then we'd wait for the other piece. So I think just maybe a tighter coupling so that we're really clear with intentional with both communities.
I think myself, staff, and all of the stakeholders involved would really appreciate clarity, explicitly stating that, you know, all projects inclusive of the MPG dedicated building is the last sentence in the draft resolution. If we need to be a little clearer elsewhere in the resolution, certainly we can add that.
If I could just add a comment. That was something all of the program administrators said in our very last conversation, that, you know, this certainly meets everybody's needs, but it does have to be looked at as one project. It's also why we thought that through the transition, having everybody swing off, first of all, everyone's being treated the same way, right? And the site is clear. We even talked about safety needs. If you still had part of the kids on the campus and, you know, where the staging was going and all of that. So we really, we talked about a lot in a short amount of time, but that was certainly something that was really important to all of us, that this be looked at as one, one project. And everybody swings off together, get the buildings done, everyone swings back on together.
And so this is a question maybe for Dan. So we have this, the Benson High School is on its way. And then now to add some, a piece into the overall project, how do you see sort of the catch-up happening so that you then, when you're ready to go, have like one integrated project, although it's serving two different student bodies?
Sure. Yeah. It's a great question. We are in schematic design for the master plan as it was approved in December. The changes that we're proposing now, we will be able to catch up. It'll probably take six months-ish to catch that up. We have a schematic design for the main component. And this summer, we have a professional cost estimate that'll come with that in July. It'd be great to have them caught up by then. It might still be lagging a little bit, but that's kind of when we think that this other piece will be able to catch up.
Thank you. So Dr. Curtis, I think you're probably the right person for this question. So one, this is pretty exhaustive examination of a huge range of issues, both academic and operational. But one piece that I'm not sure we've sufficiently addressed is that in the original resolution for Benson for 1,700 students, that was predicated on research being done about whether or not that 1,700 student number includes the current, the students currently on the campus with the multiple pathways program or not. That was sort of the, was still an open question. And I just feel like I'm not sure that we've gotten the sufficient response about the effect on the whole system if Benson does move forward with 1,700 students that are just enrolled in the comprehensive high school. You also did just mention that there's sort of a placeholder that, or I guess Director Bailey mentioned, that possibly some of those students will be part-time accessing Benson from other high schools.
So I'm trying to remember which report we send you when, but there was one where we talked about the fact that we actually can control that enrollment, right? So we're looking at a building that needs to serve for 100 years. We're looking at wanting to bring all kinds of new programming into PPS. And now we have this opportunity to make sure that this building is including everything that we thought could happen. In terms of how does it hurt maybe other high schools or whatever, that would be on us as staff to be making recommendations along the way as we look at the data, as we look at the other high schools. You know, as those high schools have been replaced, their enrollment is growing anyway. So it hasn't turned out to be, you know, kind of a downward, continuing downward slide for those buildings. So, I mean, once people see the buildings, everyone wants to be in those schools. So I would anticipate those things keep happening. But we know that our enrollment is dropping right now. 50 years, do we know? So I think what we thought was let's create the best scenario we possibly can that allows the most flexibility. Because there is additional space, you can put visual and performing arts and you can look at what other options. I mean, we hope we're going to be improving, this was the other conversation we had just recently, is we're going to be improving all of our high schools and ensuring all of them have more of the kinds of spaces and services that students need. So we don't know how many we'll need in those programs either, but we will always have students who need to be served by those programs. Another example was the PISA program. We said, well, maybe do we move it out to all of the high schools? Well, the truth is, we have four or five high schools. We're having a welcome center is the place we're moving to. But we have other high schools that don't have enough EL students, especially around one language, where there would be enough to make it feel like a welcome center, right? So the needs continue to change, but this allows us to include anything we can think of right now. And then everything else is our decisions to make along the way based on our data.
In terms of how you utilize them?
Right. I mean, right now, we could say, no, we're not going to increase the enrollment at Benson because that potentially could be harmful to other high schools. But we don't know how long that will be true.
So this, that was our last discussion on this topic is just, we control those capacity. We can turn the dial up or down. What's different when we get to that point is we'll have a long-term CTE plan. Benson will have an opportunity to think about how it grows into its new space. Hopefully, we'll have an arts education master plan. We'll have a clear vision for the school system. We'll have a strategic plan in place that sort of operationalizes towards it. So I think we'll be in a better place to think about what makes sense, about what rate of growth makes sense for Benson in a way that also permits other high schools to similarly thrive.
So, but just to put a fine point on it, Benson is going to be built for 1,700 students. The additional supplemental building will be built for the existing other students. So this is, this is a added capacity. It's not a substitute.
It's more likely a 1,900 student complex, yes. Because you're, it's on top of the 1,700, yes.
The unified Alliance High School.
Can I, can I pick up on that?
It's not, it does not include Meek right now.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay. Can we talk about that?
That's even more students. That's an even bigger building.
Okay. Can we talk about that? So, so you mentioned PISA. I'm glad to hear that we're thinking about maximizing that as a resource. My understanding is that it's pretty significantly underutilized and that I'm guessing that we have a number of schools that have a sufficiently large population of new immigrants that, you know, having, having satellite programs in their neighborhood high school or even middle school would probably be a better model.
Well, we think we're going to need both, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're not exclusive.
And so that's why the proposal from the department was to just move them all out into schools. But as we started thinking about the students that we were serving and those who still needed all the services that are going to be there and the fact that we have these other schools that don't have many incidents of ELL students. And who knows how that will shift across the city in 100 years, right? But it's with, it's our intention to continue to develop staff to be able to include all students regardless of their needs, whether their social emotional needs, whether special education needs, whether their English learning needs. We have a lot to do to get there. So in the meantime, we have to continue to support the students we have and what those needs are.
Right. Anyway, I'm encouraging you to think big.
Thank you.
Along the same lines, so I'm curious, so it sounds like this is not a unified alliance, a plan for a unified alliance.
No.
Can you tell us more about that? Why not?
Well, by the time we put all this information together and we're meeting the timelines, we really just didn't have the time to explore what would that take? What would that additional cost be? And could you actually fit it in that space? It's certainly not something we couldn't explore. But right now, it was a really short timeline to get all of these variables answered and to meet all the need. I mean, if you look at the needs that were identified, we've answered everything. And that's what happens when you put our whole team together of bright minds, right?
So, so.
If we had more time.
Yeah, we're going to add a few more.
Okay.
Because, you know, this is the curse of competence. Now we're going to ask you to do more.
Of course. Thank you for the compliment.
Backhanded, but compliment nonetheless. So, I mean, this may be, this may be me, but I have never really understood what the rationale is for the division in Alliance. And it has always felt to me like it was more a, a response to very limited facilities than, than grounded in some fundamental pedagogical approach. So if, if I'm even close to right that that's how the two programs evolved, I'm, I mean, in for a penny, in for a pound. If we're going to do this, I would like us to do it as well as we possibly could. If there is a pedagogical reason to have Alliance split into two programs, well, okay. I'd like to hear what that pedagogical rationale is. But, but we have an opportunity now to rethink how we've been doing these programs. And if it would be more efficient, effective, if it would be better for students to have a unified alliance, now's the time.
So I'm just going to make one general comment. I've never been, so in my 38 years in education, I've never had the luxury of not considering the facility itself in most of the schools and programs that we do. Because we all inherit these old buildings that were designed for a different kind of student, different kind of education. But I'm going to let Karina talk about how the schools are different. And I just want to say, remember one of our goals was not to delay this project because that just means more money as well. So we know that we can't always do everything we want to do all at the same time. But I'll let Karina talk about the programs.
So with regard to, so with regard to program, some of the things that have happened, and many of you know this, but Alliance at Meek was the former Vogue Village. And so when Vogue Village closed down, it was moved into that facility. One of the things that is, and so we have four CTE programs at Alliance at Meek. Alliance at Meek by program runs from 8:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. It's a five-period block. We accept students six times a year. We do six, six-week terms. And we're focused on social emotional learning. We're focused on CTE. And we're focused on college and career prep. Alliance at Benson has, has always been our day-to-night high school. And so we have 10 periods, Monday through Thursday, and, and really look at how do we meet the needs of typically older students, not always, but typically older students closer to graduation. And then we're doing those things where we're really looking at their programs. So flexibility for working students, flexibility for parenting students, flexibility for students who have, sometimes kids come to us and they have, I'm just going to pick math because it's not unusual. We take care of a variety of things and then we get students with a whole variety of content area and one subject area. And math is an easy example because it frequently happens. So how do we do that in a schedule at Alliance at Benson? Oftentimes, some of the times using our Portland Evening Scholars to just look at how we work with kids' schedules. So one of the things that we've done, I think, I think multiple things are true. We have looked at facility. We have never been given the opportunity to say, what would you like? Or what would the ideal facility be for alternative, for an alternative high school? I know our superintendent has started that conversation and talking about future bonds. And I appreciate that that, that that conversation is happening. With regard, just to answer your question with regard to program, we have with intention looked at how do we keep more, often younger students at Alliance at Meek in a social emotional programming, academic programming? And how do we do day-to-night for, not always, but typically our older students at Alliance at Benson? We could conceivably do those in the same building on different floors or different cohorts. But we have also looked at how we could make the most gains for our, academically, for our students in the two facilities we currently have.
I appreciate that. This is not meant as a criticism in any way. And let me just be clear about that.
Sure.
But we have an opportunity. And, and yeah, there's no free lunch. And yeah, we're already in the hole. But, you know, I mean, if we're gonna, we have an opportunity and let's use it.
So I'm, I'm hearing Chair Moore that, I mean, we serve at the direction of the Board. You may want to see options five, A, B, and C. Think about the other half of the parking lot potentially accommodating a unified Alliance program. There's a lot of questions we would, we would have. I'm conscious our Alliance administrators are here. We are clear that that would certainly result in an added cost. Our deputy soup's getting a little anxious over there, I see. To see if this is even something that's feasible, what resonates for me is hearing our students and alumni that night at Alliance talk about how they've really kind of outgrown and it's not a fully adequate space that they're at at Meek. So they certainly deserve an improved facility there. I don't know if this is the place to do it, but it's something we can take a look at. It might not work on the same timeline. But if that's information the Board would like staff to, to work on, then, then we serve here at the pleasure.
I mean, I would agree that we need to do the due diligence on that question. And I have two kind of conflicting thoughts on it. One is that we also hear from our students that the small nature of those programs in their separate buildings is part of what makes it work for kids and part of what makes it comfortable for kids. And if you get to And if you get to, you know, three hundred and fifty or whatever, maybe you lose a little bit of that magic. Um, but the other thing is, if, if you continue and, and build this new facility at Benson, then the disparities between the two sites are exponentially greater than they even are today, uh, which doesn't seem defensible. So, I do feel like we need to at least have analysis and, and have thoroughly considered that a unified Alliance before we make any decision.
I mean, it's conceivable to me that you might decide, you know what, we need two different sites. Okay. Um, but, but I, I'd like the, I'd like to ask the question.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm gonna, I don't know if dissent is the right word, but I don't, when, when I look at the differences in the programs, when I think about, you know, CTE being one of the centers of Alliance at Meek, and are we gonna build another garage to work on cars at Benson and at a hu- a much bigger building? Doesn't make sense to me unless, unless co-location allowed us to use one auto program for, you know, one auto facility for two different programs, which I don't think it would. 'Cause I think the Benson one would be fully booked up with Benson kids, or that, that would be my guess. Then, and on the limited space, um, yeah, it doesn't make much sense to me to go forward there. Um, and also, wow, making one school better, does it, and increasing a disparity, does it, gosh, let's keep all our buildings the same old crappy building.
No, but the option is not that you wouldn't build that new building, it's that you would give more students access to the improved building.
Well, there's still space limitations, um, and program limitations, and that's, you know, when I think about Alliance at Meek and what it would be, you know, I get it's a little kid's school uh, that, that we've done the best we could with. It needs its own site, and I just don't, when I, when I imagine that, I don't see that happening on the Benson site because of the constraints, but.
So, I was, I was on the board when, uh, a lot of stuff happened, apparently. Um, when, um, we-
That's your fault.
Vocational Village was size significantly unsafe, and we retrofitted the Meek facility, which had been an elementary school for, um, Vocational Village to be renamed Alliance. Um, I think it's worth asking the question. Um, three hundred million dollars is a lot of money to be spent. So, my, my, so I think it's, it merits a sort of a due diligence, uh, review. Uh, my question would be, um, how long would that take and what would the, like, time and staff, um, staff time and the cost be to-
What can an opportunity cost you?
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out, but like, we're, we're building the most expensive high school probably in the state.
In the nation.
In the nation.
In the nation.
Uh, timing is a great question. I don't know offhand what that would be. I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with the program or the size in, in detail. Um, what I think I would like to say now is, I think it's totally fair to look at that. It makes sense. Um, that if you're going to go after and build this, this new facility, that you're going to take a minute to say, okay, are there other programs that would really benefit from being there as well, and is there, is there some economies of scale? Um, it will take a little bit of time. What I would, I think, propose now is to say, continue on with this path in, that we're pursuing right now with, with the, the clear intention that that will get looked at. And if that is the right decision, that's sort of a, a late-breaking add, if you will. But this continues on its current path, because I wanna start to very much worry about the entire Benson's schedule being jeopardized if we don't continue down this. And I think adding one program to an existing project is one task that I think is, is doable. I think it's doable to do that. Uh, when you talk about mixing up a bunch of programs, that becomes much, much more difficult. So, I think it's a doable task. I'm not sure how long it would take. I would say, we continue with this path and say, come back again and tell us what that impact would be, and if we wanna do it, and how that would, what those ramifications would be, if that makes sense.
Which, I'm just gonna ask you a question. Would we be able to do that before the, we decide the next package for the next bond? So that if, so that that cost would be included with the whole thing?
For, for the next bond, yes, it would be able to do that. I'm very confident in that.
Because in terms of the program and what the needs are, I'm sure that our program staff, I mean, they did this one really fast. This is just kind of putting two together. Um, I think that, that part we can do. I think it's just looking at, how do you build, move forward so we don't slow anything down, and then look at that package as an add. But, um, we're certainly willing to do that because we, we too see that this is an opportunity, and we appreciate that the board, at least at this point, looks like, is favorable to our collaborative solution, which is really not something any of us thought about originally. I mean, I know Guadalupe had suggested thinking about it, but we didn't see any nods in the direction of, yeah, you should take a look at that, and yet, when you put all of us in the room, it made so much sense. And so, the same thing could happen here, and we, we all believe there's a way to figure it out.
I mean, just to that, um, this kind of collaboration is, uh, is, I think, what we've all been longing for for quite a long time. Um, and it's, I mean, it's great to see. Um, I, I think this has been, we have great high schools, um, and I would like to see more of this, so I'll leave it at that.
You will.
Okay. Um, the, the other thing is, um, given the experience at Roosevelt with phasing, um, this sounds like, I mean, I, Lord knows I am not an expert in construction, but, um, not doing it in phases seems like a perfectly reasonable, um, option, a, a better option than trying to, because it was gonna be, what, three pha- three different phases? And at the end of it, you're gonna have to try to stitch everything together and, yeah.
There's a lot of benefits of being able to move the students off-site. It's gonna be quicker. It's gonna be cheaper. There isn't going to be staff and students on an active construction site. It's gonna be significantly safer. Uh, and then tying those systems all together, we, we're working on today, is a big challenge when you have, you just do pieces of a mechanical system over years. It is really, really hard. And ultimately, you're paying for a product and often not getting, which, you know, the best value.
Not to mention the cost to students of living with, living in a cons- active construction zone for years.
Well, and the impact on faculty, that was a very grueling experience for the Roosevelt community. And if we can avoid that for our schools going forward, I think we should make every effort. And I appreciate that you, you're, you're raising the possibility. Uh, we, we've, Benson's heard for about five years that there was no way that Marshall would work. If it does, that would be fabulous. I, I have a, a couple of comments on different i- issues that have been raised. Uh, as we look at Alliance at Meek, I hope one of the first things we'll be looking at is, does a more centralized location actually help the school and the kids or not? I think the multiple pathways programs that are at Benson have done a very good job of demonstrating that that's a real need for them. I wouldn't want to impose that on a community without asking if it's really the right thing.
We can certainly get the similar data that we've gotten for Alliance at Meek to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for that, for all of the multiple pathways where those kids are coming from.
And I, I certainly appreciate the history of the two programs uh, that you and Principal Fast Buffalo Horse have, have shared, which is quite bewildering as a history. It's been, uh, a lot of different decisions made, and I appreciate how hard it's been on you. Um, I do want to say particularly publicly to Ms. Som and Mr. Etchavere how very much I appreciate all of the work that you have done on this. I think you've done an extraordinary job of really squaring the circle, and we appreciate it, and thank you. Uh, the, the one other thing I, I wanted to add to the discussion about PISA, at this point, possibly beating a dead horse, but, uh, over and over again, our immigrant communities are not monolithic, and yes, as we have heard tonight and as we've heard many times, there are some communities and some individuals who are perfectly capable and who profit from coming to a centralized location for PISA. And we also know that there are other communities, particularly our recent African immigrants, and I know our Somali community, they really have significant cultural problems sending their kids across town and would really want a PISA program that's in their neighborhood. Uh, I, I hope that we can be looking at that very broadly and looking at serving a much broader section of our immigrant community.
We will continue to watch that, but the other thing we have to also think about is, what is the readiness of staff in the buildings to educate our ELL students? And we are going to be changing that model, um, but it takes time, right? So, as we bring more and more people on board to more integrated approaches, then it makes it easier to do that, especially serving multiple languages. So, we definitely have a great department to keep watching that, and they're excited to know that we are all favorable about these kinds of changes.
As the board and senior leadership have been talking about becoming more outcomes-focused, the outcomes for our students in PISA, the outcomes from our immigrant students who are not in PISA, I think are, are really things that I wanna see us following closely.
We will.
And I think you hear that from many of us.
What's the, what are your initial thoughts about what CTE programs we can provide at Marshall for Benson is there?
So, the two programs that we're concerned, that don't have necessarily the exact facilities, would be Radio and Auto.
Yeah.
But all of the other programs that Benson offers, there's been some variation of that from, um, the, uh, Grant being there and what Madison will have going in there, so.
Okay, so, so-
So, there's two programs that we would be looking into, Auto and Radio, for potentially other locations.
Um, so, we wouldn't have to move a bunch of sometimes really, really old equipment across town? What I have heard is that, yes, we are going to have to move a great deal of very, very, very old equipment across town. The, one of the flexibilities in thinking that I have really appreciated is the realization that you don't have to have the same kinds of space at Benson, which is, of course, typically very broad, very open, enormous areas, if we're gonna off-site to Marshall, that we can split things up, uh, split shops up into smaller classrooms. Managing those is going to be a challenge for faculty, and I think we should continue to say that out loud. But it is doable, we are, we, we think now.
Okay, um, I'm going to- Okay, I just wanna-
And, and would that im- impact, I mean, is cost of moving all that stuff reflected in budget estimates? Or is that, that's, uh, that's, okay, we'll, we'll get to that at, at a reasonable time.
We, we do have, uh, in the budget numbers, we do have a range in there. And admittedly, there needs to be a lot more effort, but I don't exactly what that would be.
Okay, one more question.
Can you go back to this, the slide that had, the money slide? That had this, I'm just looking at the swing, um, the swing savings, so, moving to Marshall and, um, cutting a year off the schedule and all the associated, um, issues of constructing older students on-site only saves you five million dollars? Is that, is that a, or eleven?
So, I'll make sure I follow, so we-
So, it's eleven. So, is that a net number, or is that?
So, that's an assumption, and I, I do wanna be careful, and I, I think it's in the staff board, we wanna forget that. So, if we move students off-site, we can definitely do the project quicker. Right now, it's proposed three phases plus an initial site work phase after that. Um, I don't anticipate we're gonna be able to pick up an entire year. For example, uh, Grant right now is gonna be completed in about two years with considerable time for acceleration or overtime, and that's gonna be roughly a hundred thousand square feet smaller than Benson, so two-thirds the size. So, we don't think it's gonna take a full three years, but let's just say for a second, argue it two and a half. So, there will be efficiencies gained by doing it quicker, and also efficiencies gained by not having these multiple phases and having to take certain trades and have them start and stop multiple times. Um, what exactly that cost is, is, we still need to figure that out. What we've put in here is an assumption. We just said to have some sort of number in there to know that we're thinking about it. We said one year of escalation at a five percent estimate for construction costs is roughly between eleven and twelve million dollars. That's the assumption that's in here.
So, it's a, it's a net eleven million?
Correct.
Estimated.
Right.
Um, and so, it's actually eleven million off the Benson project, which then allows us to, with eight million dollars more, create a multiple pathways, um, to graduation facility.
It does factor in. The, the offset to that is what the cost will to be to outfit Kenton and Benson. And again, those numbers are, are really big and round, so they, they do some-
Yes, it would be great to get, just drill down even more on that.
Uh, absolutely.
And then, will this also go through the, um, value in engineering, all of this through the value engineering project like you just, um, did on Lincoln?
Yep, we will. We're gonna continue that process on with our, all of our projects going forward.
I just wanna appreciate again the OSM team, all the work that Jen did, and especially in putting together the options. Oh, my gosh, my brain doesn't think like that. And I thought, what are we gonna do with all this information? And then, it was really, literally the eleventh hour when we thought it was worth it to put together this recommendation. Because honestly, the, the presentation we were bringing you was we were just gonna throw you all the options and say, this is what it looks like. And then we went, why would we do that? When there's one that sounds really obvious, and then we didn't even know about the savings. So, I think it was in a day, twenty-four hours, that Dan went to work to say, how could I really think about this? So, I'm sure we can get better numbers for you, when he has more than twenty-four hours. So, this was a really fast timeline, but it was exciting because, um, look at what we were able to do when we were collaboratively, when everybody is invested in all kids. And we know that the board is, and that's what our charge was, right? So, we can get better at all of this, especially knowing, you know, that you support us coming back with full recommendations that have all those factors figured in to the best of our ability.
Okay, so, I, I'm thinking you wanna leave tonight with some sense of whether it's a go or not.
A thumbs up would be great, or not.
I, I don't think we need to take a vote, but-
No.
Does anybody object to them proceeding with further analysis?
So, I just have a question, whether, um, the bond accountability committee is gonna, um, has reviewed this and whether they might have an opinion, because I think we're gonna hear, was that a no?
And to be fair, they, they have not seen this information.
Okay. Um, so I guess, so my, I guess my only caveat is I'd also like to hear, um, well, I'm, I'm a yes, I'm moving ahead.
Well, look, I mean, this is, this is not the end. This is the beginning, so we're gonna be hearing more, right? Can you give us a ballpark the next time we're gonna hear about this?
So, the, the deliverables are the location analysis by the end of February. So, what we wanna bring forward is an update to the board resolution next week. And really, what that's solidifying is the locations of the program. So, effectively, at Benson- So effectively at Benson, some within the Benson Polytech School and then the other programs over on the parking lot. Then we will be back in March where we will have more detail about some of the space programs, updated floor plans, we'll have an updated staff report, we'll have an updated cost estimate, we'll have an updated schedule. So it's really that target, which is March 12th, so it's coming very fast. Effectively, we have next week to more or less get it done.
Plenty of time.
Okay.
Where did we land on consideration of Unified Alliance High School?
So I heard that you would like us to explore that and bring as much information as we can.
Superintendent, may we ask that of your staff?
I think that's the direction we'll be providing. Staff?
Okay. Do you, question?
I just have one quick thing. So when we were talking, we were talking a couple minutes ago about how Benson would be transferred to Marshall and that some of the programs wouldn't be provided. I don't know why this caught my brain, but in the past couple of months, we've had a lot of conversations about community partnerships and, you know, reaching out to the community to see what the community can do for our students. Radio, I feel like would be a little bit harder, but I'm just thinking with Marshall's location, specifically you're talking about auto, it's two blocks away from 82nd Avenue, which is largely inundated with auto parts stores and car dealerships and everything. So I mean, I don't know, if we're using that lens and maybe there's a building for radio, I don't know, but there's, just thinking.
Absolutely. And I apologize if I sounded like I was insinuating we wouldn't be offering those programs. I just meant we'll have to be flexible in thinking, so that's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to just jump in on behalf of staff to say that we have, over the last few years, looked at many, many different options for offsighting things like auto and permitting with the city is an enormous issue, staff. Many of the people in this room have worked very hard at that and it continues to be a real barrier. I just want you to know, they're trying really, really hard.
Okay, I'm going to call it.
All I wanted to say was thanks for the hard work. I mean, it is really impressive of when you put all your heads together that some really exciting things can happen that meet the needs of, look at that broad range of students that, you know, we have some exciting programming possible now, I think.
I also want to appreciate all our program and school leaders. Thank you for continuing to be here. Principal Wilson, we do see you way back there, duly noted. Thank you for your collaboration on this project.
Absolutely. And thanks to the students too, everybody in the community that came out and just talked about what their needs and their desires were, so thanks again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Very thorough.
Okay. Okay, next up, quarterly bond accountability committee report.
I'd like to start out by also complimenting the team. I was, have to admit, I was a bit skeptical last year that they were going to pull all this off in time to keep the project going and so I was pleasantly surprised, although I suspect we're going to have some conversations about understanding the cost implications and how all that's going to work, but at least it's good that we have some direction now, so the team can then focus on what they need to focus on, so. So we're here to kind of give our update. I'm covering for Kevin, he's off on some exotic vacation in Southeast Asia, so you have your stuff with me tonight and Dana's joining me tonight, so she's one of our newbies, so welcome Dana.
Nice to meet you.
So we'll just kind of jump right in. So you have the report, so I'm not going to, I'm just going to touch on a few things in the interest of time. We were pleased to see that some of the vacant positions are getting filled, which is good. Hiring of a new construction manager is a good thing and we're excited about Dan and his new opportunity, although he's got a lot on his plate, so as soon as he gets more help, I think that will be better for the team. Regarding the 2012 program, things are going fast and furious at Grant. We had an opportunity to tour the school and quite impressive how it's coming together given all the challenges that they're faced with. And the fact that they were able to make up the schedule is impressive, although I suspect knowing how that's worked in the past for my projects, there'll probably be a bit of work that'll go on after school opens, but nothing too disruptive, I hope. One of the things that we learned was, and we actually saw, was the complexity of that site and the fact that nothing matched, so to speak, so floor elevations were different, all the door frames had to be custom designed and so, and that usually leads to cost overruns and so there appears to be one of about $5 million. It's looking like they will be able to do it through some other savings and keep it on budget, but there are some lessons learned from that and it kind of gets to some of your comments earlier about phasing construction as well as a design that's not completed when you go out and bid the work, which leads to a lot, a lot of these extra changes in the field. And so the OSM office has acknowledged that this is something that they continue to improve on and so to the extent we can keep projects moving on schedules and not throw curveballs to the design team, that helps minimize these types of cost overruns in the long run, so Closeout at Roosevelt is still progressing, as you're aware, there's still some issues with some mechanical systems that they're resolving, but they're hoping to have most of it done with the exception of tennis courts here shortly. Franklin looks like it's going to come in on budget, which is good, although we did notice that they're still carrying some money in the budget in case it overruns, so let's hope we don't have to spend that because it's not in the bond program. Specific to the 2017, well, it's all about the budget, it's dire, but I will say that the team is really doing a great job of trying to figure out how to control and manage the budgets that they have. The Lincoln VE exercise being an example. Got an opportunity to see that presentation a few weeks ago, was really impressed. I think it'll be a great model going forward. In fact, I've been sharing it, shared it with my, the woman who took over my job at Deport. I had lunch with her, I was, hey, you ought to see this program. And I also have a group that I lead on the side of owners, like the school district, and I'm going to have Scott Perala bring his presentation to that group, so these other owners in the community can learn from this. So really, really a great thing. $30 million off the project and still be able to keep it in budget, I mean, in scope. Very impressive, so.
And have the team say that it actually improved the design as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Without impacting the program.
Yes, no, it was, it was a great, great exercise, well done. We also learned that, some of you also have shared some concerns about why is our program so high and can we get some validation on that? So OSM is looking into that, ringing in a cost consultant, so we can get some validation that the numbers are right. I did hear at one of the briefings, Basetti architect was saying that some of these numbers are consistent with what they're seeing in Seattle. So hopefully this, that will show that, okay, yeah, they're high and they're expensive, but it's not out of line, but it'll be good to have that validation. Madison is getting ready for the big move, so they're in high gear right now with the design, as is all the planning that comes with the big swap. So hopefully the lessons learned from the Franklin-Grant swap will, this one will go a little smoother, but nonetheless, it's an interesting time. Kellogg's progressing, current budgets, estimates show that it's going to be tracking okay. We'll know for sure once we get the bids. Hopefully the bidding climate hasn't changed too much and those, that will stay on budget. Well, you got an update on Benson, so the multiple pathways was kind of a big wild card for us. I would also say that, to your questions on the savings on, by moving the students to Marshall, I think at this point, it's, there'll be guesses as to how, what the real benefits might be, but once we bring that CMDC contractor on board, they'll be able to really tell us with more certainty what kind of benefits we're going to see by trying, by doing it like we've done the other two schools. And so we may not have, they may not have great numbers that they can defend for a little while, but in a few months, once we have contractors on board, we should be in a much better position to say, hey, here's, here's how it's going to benefit you, because they're in a better position to help us understand that, so. So I would just say, be patient and we'll, I think, we'll have better numbers for you.
And I would just add to that, that beyond the financial impact of it, which there will be a reduction in costs, is really the safety for the students and for the staff there to, the idea of 1,000 students being in the middle of an active construction zone is just, it's terrifying. I just, I don't think, that's a particularly great idea for anybody, so, and just very, very difficult to manage.
Particularly when you have all of them gathered around the fence looking in and saying, you're doing it wrong.
Well, that's true. This is exactly the place we don't want them to, this right here. Haven't thought about that.
Regarding the health and safety packages, they...
Before you actually move on to that, can I just ask you a question about the projects you just talked about closing out?
Oh, yeah.
So I'm just curious, maybe this is, I don't know if this is a question for you all or Dan, but the sort of miscellaneous trailing projects for each of those, like the Roosevelt CTE project, the Grant softball field, the baseball field at Franklin that's not operational, when you're like saying these are wrapped up, are you looking at those sort of trailing pieces or...
Yes. I guess we're, we know that you can't do those simultaneously anyway, they have to be done after the other projects are done. And so the focus right now is getting, is getting the school done so you can move the students, recognizing that these other projects will tail. And we didn't really get a, we didn't talk a lot about those projects, we were more concerned about the major ones, but we will focus on those at the next meeting in April. I don't know if Dan wants to jump in? No? I don't like to answer questions for you if I don't...
No worries. We, it's definitely, we've had some lessons learned about closing out the projects, I'll be very forward with that. It's always a challenge to get to the end and we were always eager to close out a project and move on to the next one. That said, there has been some instances where we've looked and said, it makes sense for us to stick around and get things done right. For example, we're doing some small work out at Fabian now, just some items that ultimately when we got done, we looked and said, you know what, we could do that better, there's a, there's a better fix for that and so we are taking on that fix and we are getting that done. Similar with the Franklin netting, which was an original part of the program, but when they went out there and said, you know, we really can't use this field the way it is, okay, we're, so we're adding netting right now. So we do have some of those items and just some things that have just been big challenges. The Roosevelt mechanical system has been a big challenge and we literally work on it every single day and we have people out there every day and so we want to get it done right and certainly some things have taken longer than we had hoped they would.
And what about the Roosevelt CTE? What's the status of that? Which seems like a big, the Makerspace.
The Makerspace project is effectively on hold at the moment. I think that there was a presentation over last summer about the funding, about identifying a different funding source outside the bond program. So with the CTE plan that's going forward and looking at other funding options, that's effectively on hold.
I do want to mention on that, that I've been in touch with Roosevelt. Their faculty, their parents, their administration have put some really terrific thinking into what they want to see go into that space and it is much improved over what they were proposing even a year ago. I'm very happy about that and really hoping that we can put together funding, put together a plan and make that happen for them. I'd also like to say, as a separate topic, I've never been so happy with a report that I have seen from you and, but by golly, you people, you just, you can't market your way out of a paper bag because you buried your lead. Grant is coming in on budget and I would love to hear, how did you make that happen? I don't see it in the report. What, what happened?
There's a magic wand, right.
Please.
That would be the entire 2012 bond program.
Yeah, no. Please, Dan, if you could, what's happened with Grant? The overage, in my hearing, had been going up and up and up and now, gone.
So, yeah, great question. Not totally gone, so the Grant project is forecasting over budget, but what we have is savings in other areas to offset it within the 2012 bond program. So the overall program with Grant being the last project of significance is coming in basically right on target and that excludes not to go down a kind of a bird walk, but when Grant, before it moved into construction, there was a guarantee, for lack of a better word, of $10 million if and when the project needed it, because we saw it as high risk at that point in time. So it's looking to come in on budget without that additional funds, the overall program. So that's, that's in totality where we are.
Which is, you're here and it's not just Grant, it's the entire 2012 program.
Yeah.
It's like landing on an aircraft carrier, basically, like just right on the nose.
So we'll definitely, I'm going to want to get a...
Exactly.
Closer update on Roosevelt. I know I ran into former board director Tom Kurler at the Capitol today and he was asking similar questions.
I was channeling Tom.
So, and good that some thinking's been done and hopefully that's aligned with the direction we'll be heading CDE-wise, but let's make sure and kind of try to close out with a plan for that as well.
Okay, where did I...
We do realize there is somebody in the audience who lives right across the street from Grant and I think she deserves some credit for getting...
Thank you for your patience, neighbor. It'll look great when it's done.
Just touching on the two other aspects of that program, the health and safety, there are some challenges with one of the contractors, so they had to terminate him, which is always a challenge. They've assured us that they've got a plan to make sure that it doesn't totally, not a adverse effect on completing the work. They had some other challenges that they're sort of readjust, reassessing how to approach some of that work. Part of it was, part of it was the big climate, couldn't get bids on some work, so I think they've kind of learned from last year and so there's program going, planned for this summer for four sites, Rigler, Jackson, Hurst and Sitten. And the other thing that we wanted to comment on were the other issues, so the equity, the apprentice goals, the safety and the audits. So doing a great job on all, on three of those, the equity, apprentice and safety. And I would say, particularly on the equity goals, not having a disparity study to set your aspirational goal is always a challenge. And so I was, I wasn't sure how well you would do not having that as a way to help, but they've done really well. Your goal was 18%, they did, they're doing 17, so kudos to the team for hitting that goal, given some of the other constraints that you have.
And I do want to commend the partnership between the contracting team and OSM in terms of keeping that equity lens in mind and looking at how we're going to bid projects and whether projects should be bid together, whether they should be bid, you know, at the smallest increment. I mean, I think it has been present in a lot of the decision-making about how to proceed with the work and how to engage the relationships with the prime contractors.
Yes, and as I stated early on, where you have negotiated work, you're going to have better equity goals, not as easy on the hard bid work.
Yep.
So those, those goals were, you know, when we started out, we weren't hitting, doing as well and that was partly because we had a fair amount of hard bid work, which is harder to hit those goals. Regarding the audits, we've got a new performance audit coming out, I just saw it, I got a copy of it today. I just saw it. I got a copy of it today. So, we're meeting, Tenzin and I are meeting with the auditors in a couple of weeks here, first part of March.
And when is that coming to us?
We're, actually, we're going to, I had a conflict. They were going to present it to us after they presented it to you. But, I had a conflict in the afternoon, so I'm going to see it before you see it.
And I would like to hear, I think it would be good for us to hear your preamble from the BAC. You should present it to us because you commissioned it.
Oh, okay.
It's my opinion.
Okay, so I have another meeting to go to on that day then. Just kidding.
We commissioned it at their recommendation. Yeah.
Anyway, so that's coming together, but I haven't read it yet.
So, speaking of audits, and I'm not sure, you have this, but we have a summary. It's from the January 2nd contract audit, it's in our packet. Can, can we get actually a copy of it? We have a summary of it. Can we actually get a copy of the audit? And can I go back? You, I don't need it right now. I just would like to...
I'll just want to try and follow the...
This is for the 2012 program.
The January 2nd, I don't know. It's this description. It's the summary?
Oh, okay. So, that's a, yeah, that's a summary of, we, we had auditor come in and do audits of two contracts. And as a part of that, they did, they did a number of other things. Like, they went through one of our other contracts that we were negotiating and gave us best practice markup, so we were able to incorporate those. But, they also included some operational components within those audits of the GMP contracts. And so, that's a summary of what those are, but yes, we can give you the full audits as well.
Great. That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
And then, I had a question about the health and safety. You went through it so fast.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'm looking at this sheet right here.
I don't have that sheet in front of me.
I'm just looking at the, I'm trying to get to the, the bonds requirement that we spend at least 150 million on health and safety. Because there's some things above, above the line, which I don't, I wouldn't necessarily consider expenditures on health and safety. So, I'm just trying to get to where the number is that we spent 150 million.
So, I think you're talking about the, the document, the top right-hand corner says 2017 program cost summary.
Yeah, just help me...
Sure. So, the, there's an original budget column. In the bottom part, you'll see it holds up to 150 million dollars. And that's the, the seven or eight different health and safety programs. So, when the, when the bond was set up after it passed, we put all 150 million dollars into this area, which is effectively just a holding area. So, as we identify projects that are health and safety projects, we then allocate funds to those individual projects. So, if there's a roof project that's $2 million, we will transfer 2 million from the roof line into that project. So, with this, the, so what the current budget is effectively, the balance is.
So, just when I look at this, the, there's the sort of above the line, the below the line. So, eventually, the things that are above the line are not going to be, like, the contingency is going to be spent and it's going to, it's going to end up below the line in actual projects.
In, in the end, that, the below the line, the current budget, those will all be zero. Because those will all be allocated to projects where they will be encumbered and expended. So, the, the items above the line are unrelated to health and safety per se.
Right. That's what I'm, but that's not, those aren't built into the 150, or are you building in...
They're separate. So, the one...
They're additive.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I want to make sure. Okay.
Are you interested in how that money's being spent in a report?
Of course I am, but...
Because I guess, you know, I'm listening to it. I know what Dan's saying, but it's hard to follow. And maybe that's what we can talk about, so you can kind of see how it was spent. Because he's, because he's combining with our work, so he's, so yeah. If I understand it correctly, Dan, you've got projects that have got kind of two different buckets of money that are being funded out in one contract. So, it creates a tracking, financial tracking issue to really say, well, this is how much of the 150 went to...
Site-specific contracts where a, one contractor can take care of a couple of buckets of work.
Right, correct.
Right. And then, they end up on different line items.
Yes.
But, you don't see that until it's completed.
We, we can pull reports, so we track all, we, we refer to the health and safety, the different items as funding sources is just the term and how we track that. So, every one of our projects has, is funded by different funding sources. So, we could take any one of these, we could take roofs, for example, and tell you exactly what projects have been funded with those roof funds, how much they have encumbered, how much they have expended, what the balance is. So, we track all those continually, that, that's always live information. So, that's information we can pull from our, from our project management system.
So, I had a health and safety question too. In one of the summary areas on health and safety, and this may be for you, Dr. Burnham, but there was a sentence that said, "New definitions of water fixture standards from the state has spawned the need for course correction." And I wondered what that meant.
He will be up here in a few minutes.
Oh, he is going to, yeah.
Okay. He's going to.
All right. Yeah, I read that too.
What about the, who's the injury question person? Is that you?
I'm sorry? The injury question?
The injury question person. There's a sheet with super small font that...
The, the safety log, yes.
Yes. So, it, how does this compare vis-à-vis other projects, some, but at PPS? I mean, it seems like there's a fair number. PPS or industry standard?
That's a great question. I don't know that offhand, but we can get you that information. We can get you a comparison.
It just seems like there's a fair number.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's 10 accidents and 400 some thousand hours.
Yeah, I was making a note. We need to be more specific.
It's more than at our other high schools on the 2012 bond in terms of recordable incidents. But, overall, on the whole bond program, the safety record has been tracking much better than is typical.
Yeah, that's a great question. We'll pull that up.
I guess that concludes our report. It kind of overlapped a little bit in the dance, but that's okay. I just wanted to make another comment while I have you for a second. We've had some, with the addition of Dick Steinberg from Beaverton School, just breaking off. You're familiar with what Beaverton did with their new high school as it relates to seismic. And so, Dick and I have been acquiring a little bit about how's, how are we doing going forward? We probably missed an opportunity in the first, the 2012 program. But, I'm encouraged to hear that the program is treating all of the new gymnasiums with immediate occupancy, which means they can then be used as a place for, for the neighborhood. So, that was good to, good to hear that they, they made that transition going forward. So, I just wanted to comment on that because we were, it's an area of concern. I happen to be one of the authors of the Oregon Resilience Plan, so it's been something I've been focused on for a long time, so glad to see that happening.
So, my understanding is that shift happened a while ago.
Yeah, I, I don't think we were quite clear on it, so we were asking some questions at the last meeting about it. And Dick in particular was interested, given what he had done at Beaverton. And so, we just thought it was worth getting some clarity and I just wanted to pass on that. I'm happy to hear that, that he's made that change, so, yeah.
Which really is wonderful. I have been making the observation to people at the city for many years now, that the city's entire emergency management plan, in the event of an earthquake, is hotwired through our school buildings. And that actually gets a terrific response from them. Yes, by golly, that's a terrific way to put it. That's exactly how we've done it.
Yeah.
But, up to this point, our buildings were not going to be available for that kind of use. So, I, I think this is a huge benefit to all of Portland.
Yeah. Well, and you have a lot of buildings yet to go, so you can really, really make a difference in when, as this bond program progresses, so...
Vote yes on the bond.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next up is the quarterly bond report, if there's anything left.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. I'd like to introduce, as you all know, our Chief Operation Officer, Dan Young, and our new Director of Construction, Dave Ruth, who joined OSM in the last five weeks, six weeks?
Six.
So, um...
Welcome.
In your packet tonight, we can have three kind of agenda items that we will work through as OSM. Obviously, following the BAC presentation you just saw, we'll answer any questions you might have. So, we have all their information. And then, our, we have the water fixture, or the lead-in-the-water filtration pilot program that we'd like to bring before you to talk about. Dr. Burnham will be talking about that. And then, as well as the Lincoln High School update presentation. So, I know we're kind of short on time tonight, lots of going on. So, as far as answering any questions in follow-up to the BAC presentation or the general update, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point, before we move on to some of the other pieces of the presentation.
Just talk about any of the red.
Talk any of, any of the red?
On the dashboard. Any areas of particular focus by your subjective standards, how you're spending your time.
So, one of the biggest things that we're working on right now is, obviously, we're working through budgets, working through things like the value engineering, trying to make sure that we're on track. The trajectories for these projects are on track to get to where they need to be with, whether it's the value engineering ahead of time or as we're working up to Kellogg being a, is going to be a bid. So, obviously, that project will be very far along in the design process before we actually will get the confirmation of where our numbers are at. So, those are all areas where we're working significantly to make sure that we are on target as we're going forward. We are also tracking things such as, where's our schedule one? So, continuing to monitor, obviously, things like Grant and Madison, the relationship between those. We're very focused on the work that needs to happen there. At one point, Grant was approximately 120 workdays behind schedule about six to eight months ago. So, we've been focused on things such as, what is it going to take to deliver the schools on time, on schedule? Because of the ripple effect of if Grant were to slip, it's not just an impact to Grant, it's an impact to Madison. It's an impact possibly to Benson. And so, working with the project teams to understand what are those, you know, what do we have to do to get it back on schedule? And what do we have to get creative about as far as how we address the scope of work? How we're approaching the conversations? How do we address the conflicts? As well as things like with Grant and the budget overrun of where are we at? Why are we at? Where it's coming in? What is the reality of the, we can look at if 100% of the risks come in, that's one number. If we get at a very minimum number, you know, the bare minimum, if we know we're going to incur that, do we carry each one of those? Well, not really, because that's not the reality of where we're going to be. So, focusing in on where are we going to be so that we know that we're, like you mentioned, where is the bond program going to come in at? How are we maximizing those dollars? Making sure that we're not going to leave a lot of either money on the table or having to come back and scrap other plans somewhere else to be able to finish the project. It's trying to come in right on time. It's all these pieces and parts have, having to come together all at that same instant, which is that quintessential, you know, when do the kids come back to school? And that experience of coming back to the new facility, no delays. That, the staff feel it's been communicated well, there's that seamless transition. There's a lot of moving pieces and it, and it's taking an army in the background to try to make that all work. I think the number of meetings they're doing, just in the transition of Madison and Grant. I mean, they've had multiple meetings. We have a transition team that we're standing up to talk about. We had a leadership discussion about, okay, what are all the things we need to think about? Even just the idea of who are all the people we need to talk to and include in the conversation? I mean, when, you know, we get up to 50, 60 people, you know, those are the sort of things we're trying to think about as we look at things, making sure we're not, we're trying to identify things, everything we need to think about so we don't drop it through, anything doesn't, nothing drops through the cracks.
What is the date for the contract, you know, for the district's access into Grant, Grant for move-in? What's the target date?
July 26th.
That's not a lot of cushion there.
No, it's not. And so, one of the active things that Ayana and Jamie have been actively working on is, how do we have, how do we make that transition work so that it's not, well, once Grant is accessible? Okay, well, now we have from just July 26th to the start of school. So, they're actually working through the idea of, at one point, Grant will be in semi-trailers, Madison will be in semi-trailers, moving around each other in the city, trying to make space. And how do we not, how do we get all of the right semis to the right places in the right order? It, it's a monumental program in and of itself. And staff have got this dialed in, you know, you start listening, you just listen to Jamie and Ayana talk and stuff. At some point, I, it blows my mind of, they, they know down to the, this is how you do this, this is how, this is how it's going to move. And at some point, you're like, okay, if I say anything, I'm going to mess something up. So, I defer to staff.
Great. Any other questions?
Just that, I mean, I know that we've done a good job of integrating lessons learned. We're in a much better position than we were the first time we did that.
We've got two more items related to the OSM update, so is the next one John?
John's coming down.
Okay.
And then, we'll hand over to Wayne.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce John Burnham. He heads up the, what's the, what's that title again?
I'll give it to him. Thanks. I'll take her. So, first of all, I want to thank the board for taking the time tonight to listen to a water quality proposal to conduct a pilot program of six schools that has the potential to substantially reduce the lead levels well below the 15 parts per billion, which now is a state rule, was passed in January, and at the same time, potentially reduce capital expenses substantially to it. So, once again, this is a pilot. That means we want to show that it can actually work before we start spending very much money. So, why, why are we interested in doing that? Well, we still have about 500 drinking fixtures that have been tested and most of which have, were actually, the fixtures are already replaced, like CH2 asks us to do. And yet, they're still at or above the 15 parts per billion. The next step in the process we adopted back in 2017 is to do partial pipe replacement. And that means ripping into the walls, replacing pipe, not knowing for sure how far you can, how far you should go even to replace it. So, we're faced with that dilemma and that's going to be an expensive endeavor. Now, that was plugged into our budgets, our budget back in 17 for the bond though. But, if we can save some money and do it better, why not give it a shot? The other reason is, in the past year, there's been this kind of growing incidents and interest in lowering the 15 parts per billion. So, it's maybe coming a moving target list. Here's what, well, here's what I know. In the past year, the EPA has changed their guidelines from 20 parts per billion down to schools should lower the lead level to as low as possible, no numbers. Our own Oregon Health Authority, in finishing up that rule, not in the rule, but in some statements related to it, schools should reduce below 15 as they are able and if they're able. CDC and Oregon Health Authority are on record, on paper, there's no safe level of blood lead. The American Academy of Pediatrics... The American Academy of Pediatrics is on paper and public, I know because I've been interviewed about this issue, at one part per billion. We found out recently that two states in Washington DC now have regulations at five parts per billion. And we also found out recently California is targeting to go down to five parts per billion. And many schools are already attempting to do that in that state. The two states that are at five are Illinois and Michigan. So, there's our reasons for wanting to do this pilot potentially. So, what is the pilot? If you had a chance to read that, that's great. If not, that's fine, too. We're talking about picking six schools. The schools are the batch, a handful of schools where there's an extensive number of elevated fixtures, having at least 15 drinking fixtures in their data that we have, that have elevated lead. We're talking about choosing those six schools. Those six schools are Alita, Dunaway, Jefferson, Llewellyn, Rigler, and Robert Gray. What the proposal is to take those schools and install 32 what we call drinking water stations. Let's call them DWSs, that's what it is all the way through the proposal. And to investigate, thoroughly investigate, do our homework, do our science, and find the right NS-certified filters that are designed to last a long time and also reduce lead levels to very low levels. We've found so far that there's only two filters that fit our qualifications and specs. And our specs are, we want the filters to last for at least 6,000 gallons. And we want the NSF testing specs, which we now have for one of those, I'm looking for the other one, to get it settled, can reduce the lead levels down to 1 ppb for the entire 6,000 gallons. Now, NSF is a National Sanitation Foundation. I've worked with them in the past at OHSU. I'm very familiar with what they do. They're a third-party independent testing group that's been around forever. They test all sorts of things. Lead filters are just one of many, many things they do. They're very professional and very respected. So, manufacturers provide their filters and say, please test these and show us the actual results. That way, the manufacturer can advertise that as being the facts. So, you've got to get past NSF. So, once again, we've only found two filters from suppliers, manufacturers, that actually do that. The 6,000 gallon limit, if we can attain that, is 38,420 ounce bottles of water. If you do your calculations in an elementary school with 425 students, if you install four of these drinking water fixtures, and we can make these things work over a 10.5-month school year, that's about 1.6 bottles per day per individual. The filters theoretically could work for six months to a year, maybe a year even total, with just four of these stations. So, what about costs? If you look at the report or the proposal, we actually compared the three possible ways to deal with all these 500 fixtures. One of them is to do what CH2 recommended, and that's to do partial pipe replacement. There's some unknowns in that, and even though the budget was set up for that purpose. So, there's one for that. If we did all of that, nothing but that. Another one is to simply forego the existing plumbing and install plumbing on the walls in the building. So, there's cost estimates for those. And then, there's cost estimates for the pilot study, and then what it would cost for the entire district. If you look at those numbers, the pilot's going to cost about $200,000 for the six schools. The other ones are going to cost six times it, and I think the other one is more like 13 times it. So, it sure looks good on paper. It's maybe something worth doing to see if we can make this work. So, there's some about the numbers. The... It looks like the plumbing on the walls, this is just through the roof expensive to do that. So, we've already run these ideas by the FOMS, by PPS Maintenance, and also the area superintendents, and we're now talking to the board. That's part of our communication plan. And so, that's pretty much it. Save us some time. That's a real quick executive summary. There's a schedule in the plan, too, if you want to look through there.
So, I was trying to figure out how this work is relative to the work we've already done. I mean, we've replaced a lot of fixtures.
Yes, we have.
And in most cases, we're below 15... We have to be below 15 parts per billion.
Yes, we have about... We have about 1,600 functioning drinking fountains and kitchen fixtures that are below 15. That's correct.
And is there like an average level that they come out to or range?
It ranges all the way from non-detect all the way up to 14, 14.7. You know, that's the range. The average is probably... I've not done averages, but the average is probably 5, 6, 8, somewhere in that, if I had to guess.
So, if we... If the pilot works, then we're going to replace or close down all the fixtures in the buildings except for the water stations?
That would be a decision to be made. That's correct.
But that's what we're... That would be what we're moving toward? I mean, because it sounded like what you're saying is that even though there isn't a new standard below 15 parts per billion, you're expecting it to go down significantly lower. So, we would have to put the water stations the only way to guarantee if the filters work?
I think the NSF-certified filters may be the only way to get down to low numbers. That's what I think.
So, all those water fountains that were installed, so all those water fountains that were installed would be replaced by the four water stations?
Yes. If that was it, that would be a choice we could make, yes.
They wouldn't be replaced, but if there came a mandate that we had to get everything, you know, have every building down at a lower new standard?
Yes.
Then, those would be all that you would use?
That's correct.
Would be just the water stations?
I mean, that it is... What you're tapping on and referring to is a thought I've had several times. And that is that if we were to make this work and get down there one or two, then what choice would we have?
So, there might be a situation where we would keep... This is where I'm getting confused. So, the next step is to find out, obviously, how the pilot study works?
Yes.
You know, to what extent it reduces the level as low as possible?
Right.
And if it's effective, then decide, it's not just potentially about the schools where we have pipe problems, it's potentially having a mixture of the fixtures we've already replaced and the water stations?
That's correct.
Or, we could decide right now to shut down even the new fixtures and just stick with the water stations?
The moving target, potential moving target for the lead level of 15, that's one of our greatest concerns, because we could reach to the point of finishing what we already tried, started doing, and three years from now, we wind up with much lower levels. So, we can't control that. What we can control maybe is getting our lead levels as low as possible.
Dr. Burnham, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. I've heard from a lot of parents about, as I'm sure you have too, about concern with the 15 parts per billion. I didn't want to ask, just because, I'm sorry, it's not clear to me, from the cost estimates, I assume these are totals for installation and the first year's worth of filters. What's the cost per year thereafter?
That's what the pilot can determine for us.
Oh, okay.
So, the... What we've done so far to address that as best we can is find the right filters, once again. You can purchase these DWSs, the filter's already installed, but it's going to be whoever manufactured the drinking station, you're going to have to live with their filter. And it's going to be far below 6,000 gallons. It may or may not have been NSF-tested. So, what's unique here is that we're looking for very specific fixtures, or filters, that are NSF-certified. And there are lots of those, but not that fit our specs, what we want to do with this, especially the 6,000 gallons. So, there's some homework yet to be done here, and the pilot is the way to do it. So, and the other thing we're going to do, by the way, to see if this is feasible before the pilot even is done, is we're planning on taking these two filters, and maybe some other ones, too, and actually try them in existing drinking water stations. So, spend very little money and find out if they can work in these stations that already exist. And get some idea very quickly with data, as opposed to waiting for contracts and all the time that's required to plan and design, how you install the filters, then finally you get to test them next fall. We can find out fairly quickly before we do all that effort and all that money, and see if this is even feasible before we spend any money, well, any significant amounts of money. So, really, there's three phases here. There's what we call the pre-pilot, the pilot, and then the actual district-wide if we actually were to get to that.
And I'd also like to add, I've really appreciated you using the term "moving target." That's exactly how this has appeared to me over this last year, as we've seen all of these different standards, different adoptions, rolling out in different places in the country. And I have been feeling what little hair I have left fall out as...
So, I have three other events I can relate to you and why I'm kind of here, really, today. I went to a presentation by the professor in the University of Massachusetts who took on the responsibility to test all of the school fixtures in the entire state of Massachusetts. He made a presentation to PSU a few months ago. And at the end of the talk, he said that basically 10% is what we're seeing across the entire state, and getting it down much lower than the 15 is going to be difficult. But he did say that the state of Massachusetts is considering going down... Excuse me. He said they are promoting the schools to get down to one. The other thing that's happened to me is that I had a meeting with the local municipality, drinking folks here, and water folks here, a few months ago. They wanted an update on where we're at. We didn't talk about this plan at all. And at the very end of the meeting, I asked this very straight court question, since they're regulated by EPA and what's called the lead and copper rule. And I asked them a simple question. Is EPA talking about and doing any discussions or planning to reduce the 15 parts per billion for their world, the municipal world? They immediately said, yes, they are. The other thing that's happened to me is I've given two interviews in the past few months about this, not about the pilot, but about the issue of where we're at. And both interviews asked the question, posed the question, isn't 15 too high? So, it's just been coming at me right and left, you can see from various sources. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here, one of the reasons we push this direction. I mean, everyone's known you can put filters on drinking fountains. That's nothing new, right? The issue is, can you do it more carefully, more thoughtfully, more scientific-based? And get the right team behind you to do it. So, there is quite a bit of science and physics here. I'm in contact with some engineers at 3M. 3M is one of the suppliers. And learning from them, not suppliers, manufacturers, learning from them of what they know about district, countrywide, too. With the understanding that they're not going to get any business from us, we just want to talk about the facts and what they know. So, I'm getting information input from them, too.
I think one of the added benefits of the pilot program is, is when we start thinking about a pipe replacement protocol, and having to basically essentially chase the pipes into the walls, the level of impact to the operational schools, what it would take to accomplish that, and the risks that we might be engendering in as we try to chase these things further and further in. The ability to avoid much of that is an excellent risk mitigation approach to not get into, starting dealing with all kinds of issues, especially in these schools that have been built over, multiple phases. You know, Grant was built over six different phases over the course of four years. You find all kinds of interesting things as you all been brought up to speed on over the course of the last year of what we find when we start opening the walls up, so...
So... You know, I have to say, in the age of Trump, they're not really moving in the direction of greater regulation, generally speaking. So, the fact that it's a moving target, always going down, that says something. So, I did have a question about, what exactly are you testing for in this pilot? Are you testing for cost? Are you testing for durability of the, you know, lifespan of the filters? Are you testing for the ability to get down to one with these filters? I mean...
All of the above. So far, all of the above.
Okay.
That's where they'll be designed.
Okay.
And also practicality, ease of replacement of filters and so forth would be a factor, too. And other issues like, what about the particulate that might be in the water in some schools? We don't want it coming onto our nice filter, our good filter. So, those are the things we're talking about. Also, installation, how do we... What's the best way to install these things? So, there's a variety of things we'll test with the pilot.
So, Portland continues not to condition the water, right? Which may be increasing the degree to which lead is leaching out of pipes. Can we quantify that cost for us at all?
The cost of what?
So, my understanding, you know, I'm not a water scientist either. But my understanding is that because Portland doesn't condition the water, and we often have iron pipes and lead solder, thank you, that there's more leaching of lead. That's possible. And Portland has refused to do it primarily on the basis of cost, right? Can we quantify the cost that we are incurring because the city refuses to incur that cost?
The... That's because of the lead and copper rules with that from 1991. I was involved in that process with OHSU back in the mid-'90s, when that rule finally got implemented pretty well by EPA. And the city of Portland has very, very pure water, one of the purest waters in the country, because it's coming out of the mountains and so well-maintained along the way. And the more pure the water is, the more acidic it is, and therefore more corrosive. There was quite a bit of resistance, and this is just my memory. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I'm just going by my memory. Back then, there was quite a bit of resistance with the city because they didn't want to, you know, put other materials in their water. They gave us a list of things to put in it. They wanted to know how it would affect processes at OHSU. We answered. I think, I'm almost certain that even back then, the city of Portland did take steps to do a limited process of treating the water. And they have done, I think, one step since, too. In the meeting with the municipality here a few months ago, they have a plan to go a much, a much bigger step in the direction of making their water less corrosive. It's not, will not be implemented until 2023. As far as quantifying our costs from that, I don't know how I would do that. But there is a cost. There's no question about that.
Any other questions? Do you need something from us to go forward with this thing?
We do not, just purely informational.
So, just an observation. You made a comment about what's happening at the federal level. That's part of my other professional life. I monitor what's happening in states all over the country. And while the federal government is not moving at a quick pace on regulatory changes, environmental limitations at the state and local level, there is a pretty fast-moving wave of regulation, lots coming from California. So, I think if we're looking at what other, you know, sort of early adopter states are doing... it's probably going to come to Oregon fairly quickly, despite the federal government.
No, I get that, but, but, I mean, my understanding is that the EPA lowered its, its threshold, right? Didn't, did I understand that right? That the EPA has lowered it from twenty pots per billion to fifteen?
EPA has the lead and copper rule, which applies only to the municipality, not to us.
Right, but still they lower it, right?
And, and then they had guidelines written in two thousand and six. And that was the guidelines that everything that we've done here were built on. In October of last year, they reissued those guidelines and did a more sophisticated job. There is not a single word in there about action levels. They took out the twenty parts per billion. It's gone.
Oh, so now it's.
And now they're saying.
So now they just do not.
Wishful thinking.
Schools should, should lower their water, lead and water as low as possible. I've been in the regulatory world now for thirty years. I've never seen a major regulator, federal regulator, use that kind of language. That is threading the needle, is what that is.
Okay.
Politically.
Okay. Okay, so.
Very much like the, you know, I'm just, I'm not a funny person. I'm not at all. But one of my very favorite jokes is the Republican posture on health insurance.
It's not a joke.
Which is that you ought to get some.
I, I do have one more data point for Rita, um, or Doctor, uh, excuse me, Director Moore. And that is that, uh, I saw data for many other states and many other cities. And a lot of cities, municipalities have been able to treat their water to get the corrosion down enough so that the homes that they test, which are the worst-case homes, certain year that they're available, is down around two or three. Portland struggles to, to meet the fifteen.
Right.
So that maybe is a bit of an answer for you.
Okay, one more comment, and then we're going to move on.
So while we're on the health and safety topic, um, Senate Bill two eighty-three has been introduced and it looks, does a review of peer-reviewed literature on, um, the biological effects of microwave radiation. And, um, this is a topic that we've had, had many times at, um, in public comment here. Yeah.
Okay, I thought you were talking about my microwave oven. Now we're fighting words.
Aren't you listening when Mr. Morrison has been commenting? But I just want to note that this is an issue that's been brought before, um, the PPS board many times. And I think there's an opportunity to, instead of, um, looking at PPS to provide some pretty sophisticated analysis that this could be taken care of at this, addressed at the state level. Um, and so I would hope that we would end up being supportive so that we can have OHA and other, um, entities at the state level look at it versus this being a PPS-specific review. So hopefully the legislative committee will look at this. And I know you looked at the, this bill earlier.
Yes.
I have, uh, off and on as I had time, read all of the literature related to most recent study by the National Toxicology Program, which is part of NIH. It's a sub-agency, sub-sub, I think, actually. So I'm aware of that and what has happened since. I've also been tracking, you want me to speak, um?
Sure.
Impromptu here? Okay, so, yeah. Uh, I've also been tracking the response to a number of state and federal agencies to that study, which was a, uh, an animal study. That it appears that, uh, that that is the first evidence of tumor formation from electromagnetic, um, radiation that's been determined. So what's going to happen, and this is where I'm finished here. What's probably going to happen now is there's going to be a lot of money to be put into epidemiology studies, human studies, to actually pin this down fairly quickly. And that's, that's this new statute that we know about. Uh, that's pretty much, um, what maybe should happen now is information transfer advice.
Okay, so hopefully we can get behind that.
We won't know the truth though, for, I think, for several years in terms of the.
Okay.
Inclusions.
Okay. I think our work here is done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll invite Dave Ruth to come down with the Lincoln team to, um, present the status of Lincoln High School.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Guerrero. Uh, my name is Eric Gerting. I'm the Senior Project Manager with OSM for the Lincoln Project. Um, here with Chris Lynn, Principal Architect from Bora Architects. Just want to start off just giving you kind of a overall, um, update of where we're at, just at least in the, the schedule for the Lincoln Project. We are currently in our design development phase. And, uh, what we've come here to talk to you about is, you know, the work we did at the end of schematic design that kind of kicked us off into the design development regarding, uh, the project budget and our pathway to budget, um, and our approach to value engineering. And then just overall, and I know you've seen the schedule before and it's kind of going off the page here, but, um, um, you know, we're, we're looking about, um, this time next year to actually start construction. We're going to be mobilizing in January and, um, getting in the ground early with our foundation work, which is hopefully going to mitigate one of our biggest risk items regarding construction. But what we're talking about, um, here tonight regarding, um, our hard cost budget, which is a hundred and eighty-six point eight million dollars. So that is just the construction cost budget. That's not our overall entire project budget. But we want to talk about, um, where we are in this budget and, and how we're working to maintain that. We had, uh, estimates done at what is our seventy-five percent completion point of schematic design. Uh, we had, uh, two estimates done by the team. Uh, one, uh, estimator that is part of the, uh, architecture and engineering team, and the other is our contractor. Uh, so we see that the estimates, uh, come in, came in, uh, between two hundred and nine million and two hundred and eighteen million, which gave us a range of between, um, twenty-two point six and thirty-one point seven million dollars over budget. So as, uh, our other projects through the bond work, uh, we've had similar kind of ups and downs where we do an estimating process at the end of a design phase. Uh, we have estimates that come in over budget. Then we go through a value engineering process to get the project kind of back, uh, within budget. That, um, up until now, I think that's been a fairly, um, uh, I guess painful project, uh, process. We know that, I think, value engineering has, has sort of gained kind of a, um, a bad perception here at the district because decisions were made, uh, maybe not necessarily with, um, kind of a full criteria to really look at the impact of those decisions. Decisions that were primarily made, uh, strictly from a, uh, cost standpoint. And, um, with, you know, the direction we got from the board, uh, when we had our, our, um, budget approved at the master plan, you know, was to go forward with, um, a value engineering process, maybe with a capital V and a capital E, that this is going to be something different. And so we wanted to make sure we did that. And so, um, um, before we get into that process, I just wanted to have Chris talk about some of the, uh, areas of cost increase within the project so you can get an understanding of where we saw, um, those increases.
Uh, sure. Uh, that's a hard act to follow, Eric. Working with the, uh, value engineering consultant that the district hired, uh, we looked at this, uh, they have a rule that let's look at the top eighty percent. Let's focus our energy on the, on the biggest differences and the biggest cost issues. So of the cost delta that, uh, Eric explained, we looked at whether the components had made up the eighty percent of that. And you'll see, for example, on metals, there's things like structural steel and, uh, framing and connections. And so there's a range there, three point nine to five point oh. And so, uh, what that represents is what the, the low number is, you know, how much the low estimator was over, and then the high number is how much the high was over. So what we're looking for here is wide variances between those. And you'll see for the most part, uh, I think with the exception of, of, uh, maybe the electrical and communications, the, uh, the cost increases were pretty close between the two estimates. Uh, and so that gave us a lot of confidence that these were the categories where we needed to put the most work. So for things like metals, you know, there's, there's tariffs and there's, uh, the cost of labor for, you know, steel workers and things like that. That certainly was part of it. Finishes, you know, I think what we found was, uh, in working with both, uh, the contractor and with the estimator, is that probably the building was, uh, not as efficient as it should be. Maybe had a little extra, uh, non-programmatic square feet, like, uh, hallways and things like that. So there's been a big effort to actually condense the building, make it more efficient. Every square foot less that we build is less square footage we have to finish. Uh, and we've actually been able to make, we've been made, uh, some great strides in reducing the square footage without reducing any of the ed-spec program. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit. But these are pretty self-explanatory. You know, these are, these are the things that we've really been focusing on over the past, uh, couple of weeks, uh, to try and, uh, bring the project back on the pathway to budget. So the, uh, the other thing that came out of the value engineering workshop were these guiding principles. So as Eric said, we don't want to just cut for cutting sakes. Let's, let's figure out what are the things that we have to do that are going to guide us. So, uh, maintaining the full ed-spec program has been a guiding principle for us, uh, and we're still there. Creating a more efficient building. We had, uh, quite a few double-height spaces, so we've made those single-height. You might remember the building had a courtyard, uh, so we've actually put programmatic space in that courtyard now. We've actually dropped an entire story off the building and just made, made everything denser, more compact, uh, not as grand, not as tall, saved all the, uh, all the program space. And, uh, I have to say, you know, like, like, uh, Director Konstant alluded to earlier, it has made the building better in some aspects. It's, I think, more approachable, it's a more human scale. Having one less floor for students to run up and down the stairs is certainly, uh, an advantage.
I think one thing that's worth noting on those guiding principles is that, in my opinion, number one should, uh, not be, you, you referred to it as maintaining the full ed-spec program. So I think what you mean is not deviating anymore from the ed specs. Because we do have significant areas where Lincoln is not meeting the ed specs because of space constraints.
Correct. Particularly on the athletic field side, yeah. So moving forward, uh, uh, we are working with the contractor through a process called Target Value Design. So what that means is Eric and Heidi are in our office two days a week with the contractor. Two full days a week, we're all basically in the conference room together. Uh, and we've divided the project up into eight different categories. For example, structure, mechanical, et cetera. We have specialists in each one of those categories. And we get together, uh, for four hours every day, uh, every day we meet with those specialists. And we work through every single detailed issue, uh, related to, uh, trying to hone that particular part of the project, make it as efficient as possible. And, uh, it's kind of a whirlwind of ideas. There's a lot of back and forth. Uh, and some great strategies come out of that. And so, for example, we learned today that, you know, there's one group working on what we call the enclosure of the building. That's the exterior wall and windows. And, uh, we learned that we're on track to save a million dollars over our last estimate just by making the building more compact, simplifying details, picking the right materials, et cetera. So we hope to find that kind of savings across every, every ca- every category that we're working in.
So to kind of kick, kick off this effort then, after we got our estimates in, we, you know, we hired, uh, a consultant to come in and facilitate this value engineering, uh, workshop. Uh, so this is definitely a, a different approach than what the project teams had done before. Usually you get the project team, you know, looking at ide- at ideas and ways to try to save money. The architects would design something, they'd send it over to the contractor, they'd put new prices on it. And that process, uh, could actually, you know, take a few weeks to really kind of vet, uh, a number of different ideas. Uh, so this was definitely a, a different experience, um, for the team and for all, all those involved. It was the first time, I think, anyone had really done something like this. Where we were basically in a room with, with about twenty of us for five days straight with this facilitator, where we, uh, you know, we established a, a set of criteria, um, which we would follow for each decision. So, uh, again, back to kind of what is the performance criteria of the facility? How does it relate to, uh, kind of long-term maintainability? Uh, what is the impact, um, of the space, of the quality of the space with this idea? So each value engineering idea had its own study, had its own, uh, kind of work, uh, workbook that, um, was made. And so they would be assigned to different people. And we had over fifty ideas that were studied during that week. And we had another eighty or so ideas that were below a threshold. Uh, we, we had a target, um, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sort of per idea. So anything that was above two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimated savings, we, we spent, um, that, a part of that week really analyzing, putting together the alternatives and the potential cost savings. Then the other some eighty ideas or so, you know, down to ideas that were maybe saving ten thousand dollars, were kind of put on another list to, uh, have further work done, you know, after this, uh, five-day workshop. But we, you know, we couldn't get to all, you know, a hundred and thirty ideas in that, in that five days. So we really wanted to target kind of those big-ticket items. Um, and, and I think this is one of the things that was, it was really interesting to see where some ideas that we would normally put on, on the, on a list at the beginning, we immediately cross them off because we knew that, that it didn't either meet, uh, the performance criteria of the building or it was an impact to the function of the building, even though it could have saved a lot of money. And through that process then, uh, during the workshop, uh, let's see, we had, yeah, fifty-two different ideas uh, that totaled in about twenty-four point one million dollars of potential savings. And then the eighty-plus, um, ideas, uh, post-workshop, uh, were another five point three. So the total potential savings, um, of all these ideas totaled up to be twenty-nine point five million dollars. And as you saw, uh, before, kind of on the high end of that range, we were thirty-one, uh, just over thirty-one million. And so, um, and actually the, the team was surprised. We did not expect to get that close to what we thought, uh, our budget issue was. And so, um, it was pretty, pretty amazing to see all that effort come through. And so, uh, this was what allowed us really to continue on the project, knowing that we're, we have a path to budget. We need to take these ideas and continue to study them and vet them. Some of them involve working with the city of Portland, uh, or the state regarding certain requirements. And so we're still working on those. But it, it showed that we, we could move forward and we didn't have to cut program. I think that was the main thing, that, that we just did not want to be cutting educational program to try to, uh, keep us on budget.
Can you give us, can you give us an example of some of the city and state, um, things that, um, we need the, them to approve in order to achieve the savings?
Sure. Um, at the city level, uh, there's a new requirement for, uh, green roof, eco-roof on top of buildings in this, uh, central city. They require up to sixty percent of your roof area to be green roof. And we were, we're asking for a modification for that. So we're working with Design Commission to, uh, and, and BDS to try to come up with an approach that could provide us some savings. We'd still want to have green roof. We don't want to delete it. But we have kind of competing, uh, requirements because at the state level, um, there's a requirement for public facilities to dedicate one and a half percent of a construction cost to what's called, uh, green energy alternatives, um, or green energy technology. And, uh, what that usually translates into are, uh, solar photovoltaic array systems. And so, so we have the requirement then to have these PV systems on the roof as well as an eco-roof. And you can build them together, but it's not very efficient. Uh, it, it actually impacts our ability to meet the one and a half percent that the state requirement has. So we, you, you know, so it's, it's very, it's complicated on the design side, also on the maintenance side, and just the feasibility of the system. and just the feasibility of the systems. And so we're, in fact, we were at Design Commission about a week ago. And they said this was the first project that was coming to them that had the double requirement at the state and the city level. So it's, it's, it's an interesting challenge and so that's one of the things that we're working on. But that's, you know, that's a potential, you know, between 700 and a million dollars right there.
So the pathway to budget that we talked about earlier, basically our strategy is to accept every VE item that we can that passes muster, meets our principles. We continue to look for opportunity to save money. There's an idea about bringing on some early trade partners through the contractor. That would be mechanical, electrical plumbing trades, facade contractors potentially, to help identify risk and suggest simpler ways to do things. And we're big proponents now of this target value design process, which is an intense integrated team approach with the owner, the architect and contractor all in the room at the same time.
And then one thing about the target value design process is that as we've split up the scope of work into these different kind of areas or buckets, you know, we've established a dollar amount that we were trying to hit for that certain area. So we may be meeting budget in another area so that maybe we could transfer some of that budget to another area that we're having difficult meeting that budget. But what, and the background or I guess the backup to that sort of target value is historical information, it's market, current market information. And so we're, you know, establishing what we think that area should cost and then looking at our budget, sort of how do we align those? And then, and that's when we have these long meetings where we're talking about, we're tracking all these VE items that we came up with in our workshop so that when we're sitting in that group, what tends to happen in design development is as design gets more developed, a lot of times costs can go up. And so we're continually going back to that, that log of VE items to make sure that we're keeping on track with those. And as Chris was saying, sometimes we're coming up with new ideas where we can have additional savings. And the other thing that this allows us to do is we, as we design, we have a better sense of what the cost is so that we don't get to the end of this design phase, do another estimating process and then come back, oh, my gosh, all of a sudden we're another 15 million over or something. So that this, this keeps kind of that more of a constant sort of, I guess, managing of the costs.
That sawtooth pattern that we've seen.
Yes.
And what are your early indications from the contractor on board now, you know, heading into schematic design? Do they, do they feel like they might have areas where they can find significant savings based on their own way of doing things and experience in other projects? Or is most of that on us still on our team now?
No, they're bringing many, many ideas to the table. Dozens, literally dozens of different ideas about, you know, anything from details on how to connect things together to ideas about the crane and the building sharing foundation pads. I mean, we are going through this with a fine-tooth comb and the contractor's bringing a lot to the table.
And part of that process is they're bringing in the potential subcontractors or installers that are actually doing the work. So, so that we can hear from the folks that are using the same system down the street on another building. Okay, this is what's working now, or your idea has this material, but, you know, we had an issue with it. You should look at something else. So it's really kind of getting kind of up to date and current best practice. I don't know if we have, I think, is that, oh. Then we just had a couple of images of kind of where, what sort of the massing of the building looks like. And this, this is kind of where we are with, with a floor taken off the building. So the tall portion, you know, we lost a floor off of that from seven to six. And also the main, you know, the main podium kind of wrapping around is three stories and now it's two stories. So as we were saying, we think it just, it helps kind of bring the scale of the building down a bit. We do think and really feel like it's going to look more like a school than less like kind of an urban, modern building that could look like an office building or something like that. And we're engaging with, you know, our design advisory group. We're going to continue to have some meetings with our design advisory group, working on the design because we know that some things aren't quite worked out. And we really want to make sure that we get that community input and buy-in on the project because there's, you know, been years of work behind this effort.
And these are, these are sketches, it's not going to be a white building, just so you know.
Cardinal red.
Cardinal red.
Red brick, right?
It's red. Maybe not brick.
It's supposed to look like a school.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's really kind of the end of our presentation. Are there any questions for us?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, it does just, oh, you moved it. I had one. What, what direction are we looking at there?
Uh, this is, we're on, coming up from the south end of 16th. And this is the gym and loading dock area. And again, these are early day, early, early rendering, so.
Is that looking north?
We're looking north, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was better.
This is looking from the track and field towards the building.
Any further questions? Okay, nicely done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it supposed to be in this panel?
He only told me there were two presentations.
He's got a stick. Technical difficulties.
We'll just look at this for a while, it's really beautiful.
Do you have the right icon? Oh, it's on the, okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Am I the only one who thinks that it's not comforting that our IT director is back there laughing at us?
We're going to download it and make it bigger, bigger screen. But anyway, while we're doing that, let me take a moment to introduce who I have with me tonight. Again, I'm Claire Hertz, Deputy Superintendent of Business and Operations. And with me tonight from Flow Analytics are our consultants Tyler Vick and Clark Worth that are working with us on our enrollment and program balancing throughout the district. So we came here tonight to do the initial sharing of, you know, we've started to gather some information. Some of the things I want you to be thinking about as we're presenting to you tonight is what is missing? What have we, what are we not thinking about? You guys have brought lots of things up over time and we've been charting them out. But I want to make sure that we're not missing something. And then as we're going through this, you'll see there will be board engagement throughout the process. And as we're talking about when and how we're going to do that, I'd love for you to think about, does this meet your needs and what you're expecting in the process? Okay, so if you think about those two questions as we go through the presentation.
That's right.
Yep.
Hello, as Claire said, my name's Tyler Vick. I'm a principal at Flow Analytics. And we're pleased to be working with the district on the upcoming realignment process. Some of the objectives that we just wanted to put out first and foremost, as we get into the process, you'll see that there's a project definition phase of which we're currently in and we'll talk more to that in a moment. But from a, from zooming out a little bit, the primary objectives are to maintain healthy and stable enrollment at our neighborhood schools, accommodate enrollment growth projections, serve needs of a diverse student body, including race, ethnicity, language, income, gender and special ed, and reduce disparities in our educational outcomes. Some of the guiding values, let's go to the next slide here, that you see are historic and were included in previous D-BRAC. And at least it's a good starting point is equity in both in process and outcomes. Access, that is opportunities for every student. And then, and of course, environment where facilities match enrollment and program needs. So those are kind of our guiding values and objectives here at the onset. Again, some of these will be updated as we get through our project definition phase. I will say this is very small font. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, should we wait to get all the way through it or just can we ask questions?
You can certainly ask questions along the way, yeah, feel free to.
So I guess my only, my comment on the guiding values, I think, is a big overarching sort of set of values, they are fine, but I think they need a lot more detail because equity and access, I think, can be described very differently. And I think in this process, it's going to be important that we describe it because we may have people end up opposing, providing diametrically opposite arguments using, you know, their definition of equity or access in the process. So I would hope that at some point we have, and not everybody was involved in D-BRAC, that we have our sort of regrounding on what our collective values are and what we mean by equity and access.
I think Director Brimadwards, you're right on. I think it's going to be important for the board to set out some guiding principles as we embark on this process because, you know, statements like, "In PPS, we believe a diverse school portfolio should include XYZ." You know, what are the bumper rails as we begin this process, I think is going to be important.
So I've been trying to inject a values discussion into the visioning process. So because I kept serving on committees and going, well, what are our values? And we'd have to reinvent our values all over again when we should have a district value statement that we might then tweak for this specific work that's being done. But I'd really like to see us, you know, at minimum in the visioning process, throw out, here's a stab at it, what do you like, what's missing, what needs to be tweaked so that we end up with a community-supported value statement.
So maybe as you get to the April box, you can talk about how that might be part of the process?
And I will say that we're very aware that there's a variety of district policy in place that gets to some expanded set of values and some of those core principles and those guiding principles that we intend to use. This was a teaser, a little teaser as we go into our project definition, definition phase that when we get to the April 1st, one of the outcomes of that is to get a flushed-out guiding principles, core values document that we can, that we can stand by through the, through the process. So this is quite small and I will say I have, I do have 11-by-7, 11-by-17 handouts if any of you would like slightly larger copy. So here we are in February. One of the things that I know we've been talking to with the, with the consulting team and with district staff is, you know, we have, we have one year and we're already into that year to get, to get some priorities done. Realizing that and thinking with the end in mind is that we have to get a recommendation to the board next January for those, those changes that may go into effect the fall of 2020 and then by March for any changes that may go into effect by 2021. So we're being very aware of the timeline ahead of us. And also that we need to get off on the right foot and take the time to make sure that we ingest all the appropriate data as part of the data discovery phase and that we make sure we get on the right foot in terms of putting together a well-thought-out community engagement plan. So the last thing we want to do in working with, through the district is to, is to speed this up too quickly and not for it to be thoughtful and thoughtfully well, well-planned. So that's our intent with the entire process. So with that, this initial phase, the project definition phase, we really are asking between now and April 1st to define that year-one project definition, which would solidify the priorities that we intend to tackle the first year. And then with that, have clear goals, objectives and a decision-making process that we can stand by and that we can make sure that the community can embrace as well. Those guiding principles and core values that we just spoke to, that we refine those and get those back in front of you. And then we also have a community engagement plan at that, that point as well that speaks to how we intend to work with the various stakeholders across the district in those areas that we intend, intend to work the first year. Anything else we want to add? Anything else we want to add on that?
So as we go through this process, we'll be really working with both the board and our instructional leadership throughout, to making sure that we're circling with the board and with our instructional leadership. So that we make sure that we're capturing everything that we need programmatically as we go through this process. So there are some decisions that might need to be made that would engage maybe not this year's first look, but maybe in year two. And then as we go through with future bonds and layering that, layering that work on top, we might need that instructional leadership guidance at that, embedded in this process. And I'm not sure if that's reflected on this slide.
I have a quick question on that. So are we assuming that we will get analysis and recommendation from our instructional leadership on focus option programs by January of 2020 when this recommendation comes forward?
I don't have that specific timing worked out, but there will be, that will be embedded in this process as we're going forward.
The last slide suggests that the focus option is second year, not first year. And I just have a big star next to that, that I don't think, I don't think that's going to work.
Has to be concurrent.
Okay. And, and I think that's, that's PPS work, not flow work.
Correct.
Or PPS flow.
Correct.
But definitely there's a big part of that that's PPS work.
So if you think of the enrollment and program balancing as here and it's really more operational staff working on those issues. And then on another circle over here is the board and their leadership and guidance throughout the district as well as our instructional leaders that are helping guide us with programs. So both those pieces inform this third process. So we, it is an overlapping and we'll have to, we're working that through as we go.
So the other thing that's not on here for the, for the year-one project definition in that, that lower box there that we intend to deliver by that April 1st is, we would hope in addition to the year-one priorities solidified, that we have a good sense of what the year-two priorities are and if we can go. And if we can go further out, that's great. And the reason being is, you know, we're going to spend a lot of time this year doing a district-wide analysis and that's going to come in a form of a, of a enrollment, capacity, and program analysis report July 1st. So the extent to which we can make sure that decisions we're making on priorities this year and any recommendations we bring to the board in January, the last thing we want to do is not have foresight to how those changes may affect our ability to make good decisions in year-two priorities. Our experience has shown with districts that this is very much a trickle-down effect. And it's easy for certain areas to, to make adjustments, especially in boundary alignment, and to come back and think that we're able to contain that geographically and then have to come back and affecting similar areas twice. That is not what we want to do or our intent. So we want to have as much foresight as we possibly can. Beyond April 1st, you will see that, that the blue above is, says community engagement and then down below says data analysis. And then although, Clark made a good point earlier, that although the community engagement is on top, it does serve the technical analysis and it's really there to involve the right people at the right time, on the right topic. To that end, one of the things we are waiting for on the, on the data analytics side is for PSU's forecast to be completed in March. So we have a close relationship with Charles Reinerstein at PSU and working with other districts, so our intent is to get his forecast into March and integrate that into our process. So that as we're doing scenario modeling for future scenarios, we're able to re-aggregate and update that enrollment forecast on the fly. That's something we've, we've been successful with, with other districts. Concurrently to that, on the, on the community engagement side, we do want to start identifying work groups. And those are those, those localized work groups within regions that we would like to have both district staff and parents involved. This may look some, like something quite different than a, than what the district went through with the D-BRAC. We're trying to keep these more regionally focused to the extent possible. And again, the year-one project definition, part of the initial assessment is to at least do enough initial analysis that we can look at these priority areas and see to what degree we can contain them. Do we feel like they're going to spill over into beyond one feeder, for example? So those are the type of things we'll be looking at as, as part of that. But identifying work groups for each of the priority areas, we would like to begin constructing them, bringing those together in April and May. And then we'd also like to begin some initial community engagement with parent surveys. We've had a lot of success with other districts. And actually doing executive-style phone interviews with parents. A little different, we do, our surveys a little different because we're ingesting all the student data, student information and mapping the kids to the, to the homes and where they live. And we know which kids attend which programs and which schools. And we have a variety of other great attribute information on socioeconomic, et cetera. We can design these surveys so that we're making sure that we're hitting a certain number of surveys within affected areas and across different student populations, so that we feel confident in our surveys. Typically, we have about a 2.5% confidence interval in our, in our surveys. These are typically 10 to 15 minutes long. We can be, we can customize these surveys to hit on specific interest and, and touchpoints for these, these various areas. And we usually have about a 95% participation rate. So I could, I could say Portland Public for this first year is doing 400 to 600 targeted parent surveys.
These are actually interviews, not go to a website?
Yep, correct, yeah, yeah.
What will you be surveying on?
Getting feedback on the upcoming process, on the upcoming process around core values. And even though some of that's going to be a little later than the, the project year-one definition, we always find that it's, there's a lot of valuable information around those touchpoints for programs or other important aspects of the work groups and may want to take into consideration. Some of those could be not fracturing neighborhoods. They could be around transportation issues and walkability, school safety. And then, in some cases for districts, we find that it's a great opportunity to, to learn about some other touchpoints. I know in North Clackamas, we focus a little bit on mobility as well, just because there is, there is student populations moving out, staying in North Clackamas for the most part, but, but moving to Happy Valley area, which isn't, you know, a big surprise. We also find that parents are extremely appreciative of us reaching out and engaging them. That's why there's such a high willingness for them to participate in these surveys and talk to us. And then we know that we're hitting certain numbers, so that it's statistically, it's, we have confidence in, in our results.
So would these be district-wide surveys or?
Our intent with the year-one priority is that if we, if we can contain to certain geographic areas and, you know, the Kellogg, Kellogg area is a great example, then we could do, target those surveys in specific areas that we know we're going to be directly working on year-one. If those, if those go broader in year-one, then, then obviously we'd have to broaden those, that scope of the surveys.
I'm going to try and ask this in a full kind of way. What is the work you anticipate doing in year-one? As I look at what you are laying out, from, from all appearances to me, I don't see where there's any difference between the way this approach is starting out and the way the district has done this in the past, which is bluntly, to pick a handful of low SES schools, they want to mess with. You, you've, it appears to me you've targeted five. How is this process going to work? We have said for years that we have to be looking at the district comprehensively. Anything that we touch, it's connected to everything else. We have to be dealing with the entire enchilada all at the same time.
And if you give us a little further into the presentation, you'll see that we're identifying all the issues that, and concerns that we are aware of. So we want to start with making sure we have the full inventory. So let's go ahead and let's, let him continue with what the process he's laying out for this year. And let's hear more about what we've, bringing forward later on in the presentation. And then we'll circle back and make sure we're getting your, your needs met.
So we see, I'm just picking up on May. So we've identified these work groups for the priority areas. Again, to the extent that they can be localized to focus on those areas, then great. If it needs to be broader, because we do want to tackle broader district-wide issues, then, then we can also do that. We do have concerns about in the timeframe, taking on the entire thing in one shot and what's realistic, given the amount of work that needs to be done just to ingest and get up to speed on the district-wide as a system. It's a very complex system. There's a lot going on when you integrate onset of new, new building capacities and with program overlay and enrollment forecasting. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that we have the foresight district-wide, that we can appropriately address any of these, year-one, year-two, and, and beyond.
And I would say that as you look at our facilities that become available in future years too, they're not all becoming available to us in one year. So we are going to have to stagger things out over time.
In May, we pick up with the, our enrollment analysis. And this is really when we start looking at that district-wide analysis and we really, we really ramp up to integrate all of the facility enrollment, projection information, and to understand what's going on district-wide and where there's opportunities and challenges and constraints. There will be an enrollment, capacity, and program analysis report that the district has asked for July 1st. But that doesn't mean we can't, we don't feel like we can't get started with a work group, especially given that, you know, we typically don't have these work groups operating over, over the summer. We just can't ask them of that. So that, the idea is in May, we do combine meetings with these groups to give them intro on the enrollment forecasting, on the enrollment assessment, on, on the parent surveys, on stakeholder interviews done as part of the project definition, and get the ball rolling so we don't feel like we have to spend that time when we come and get the process started in the fall. The intent is, is by August 1st, and at the top there, you'll see specific board engagement. So obviously, we do plan to come back after April to update the board on the year-one project definition and everything within that defining kind of box down there. In August, we would come back to define what we found in that enrollment, capacity, and program analysis report. And we'd also have a, the opportunity to see what we always refer to as kind of our first spring board proposal. And the idea here is that we don't want to start a committee process with a bunch of blank maps and tell people to start drawing new boundaries. We take everything we've learned in our enrollment analysis, program analysis, integration of the forecasting and with district staff institutional knowledge. And we, we go through a number of iterative processes to come out with our absolute best first, first spring board proposal. That's the starting point. I will tell you, we've never seen the spring board proposal stick all the way through a committee process. It always gets changed and always for the better. But it's us taking our, using our analytical tools and with district staff, coming up with the best first shot at it. We envision a, yeah, but.
That's a first shot at, at redrawing boundaries? And that's for the entire district or?
That would be for whatever priorities we identify and confirm we're going to, we're going to address in 2019, yeah. Since we'll, we'll be working with, in the August, September, there in October timeline, we will update the spring board because we always use October 1st, the most stable enrollment, to do this work. And it's what, it's what Charles is using at PSU, it's what we want to use. But we will have the opportunity to update that in October before we get started in the committee process. We would like to start mid-November and run through end of January, which is, it's a, it's a tight timeframe. But it gives us 10 weeks of these area workgroup meetings and two or three open house, open houses during these processes. And then, of course, during those committee meetings, we do have tools that we do live scenario modeling on the fly to keep them as data-driven as possible. And that includes re-aggregating and updating forecasting on the fly. And we found, we, we have found with all the districts we've worked with that it really helps folks answer questions, you know, in the moment and on the fly. And there's nothing we have to come back, come back to weeks later to, to answer. We also recognize that while we, we'll be working towards January recommendations for anything that needs to be decided for the 2020 school year, concurrent to that, we will be starting year-two project definition and, and be prepared to work on year-two priorities as we're wrapping up that committee process and those recommendations in January, March, simply because we can't afford to wait till March to then switch gears and, and start completely over for the next year. Any questions in general? And then keep moving. Hopefully that'll answer some additional questions. Just a few definitions, key terms. If there's anything that was on that process diagram, I think it's all pretty straightforward, but we wanted to just give some examples of, of terms on there that may need to be defined. Yeah.
What do you mean by stakeholders?
Stakeholders means really a cross-section of, of those affected by these. Do you want to speak to this, just stakeholder interviews a little bit?
Yeah, we're interested in involving the people who would be most affected by this. And that includes internally in the, the district and also people who are parents and, and families that are affected.
Wrong way. Students as well, yes. So you notice on the, on the process diagram, I mentioned the board engagement. So there really, there's a multiple touchpoints. We're here February 19th. We'd like to come back mid-April to walk through that year-one project definition, which includes an update of the guiding principles, core values, the community engagement plan, and those clear goals, objectives, and decision-making process. August 18th, we'd like to come back and bring the board up to speed on the process and the work done today. There'll be a lot of, a lot of work that will have been done in that process, especially in the district-wide analysis with the enrollment, capacity, and program analysis report, the PSU's enrollment forecast, integrating that into a report. It's always done a little separately and we'll be integrating, working with Charles to integrate that. And then we'll have a spring board proposal on that meeting as well, in which we'd love to hear feedback.
Could you just elaborate a little bit? When you talked about stakeholders, that's potentially thousands of people. And just because I know how, how careful we've had to think about the community engagement process for our visioning process, what that takes. How, how would you envision, is there capacity with Flow Analytics to facilitate those processes? How have you typically handled that in school systems, taking on potential changes this, this significant?
Do you want to speak to stakeholder process a little more?
You know, I think it might help if we get through the process here and then talk about that. Where we talk about how it's focused on the geographic focus for year-one and the topics to focus on for year-one and then ensuing years. So we could come back to that.
Before you leave, leave the board engagement slide?
Sure, absolutely.
So just looking at this, I think there's some pretty big gaps between, there's a lot of work happening without coming back to the board. And I'd be afraid that you'd get far down a path. I would suggest more frequent check-ins. And then, I'm assuming when we get recommendations, at some point, we're going to vote on them. So it'd be good to also, like, where's, where's the expected board action? And if it's sequenced, or we're just going to all do them all in, in January or in March? Just being more explicit about what those, what those actions are and how they get sequenced. But just knowing the Portland community, I think there's a long, long time between coming back, back to the board and just, you know, right track, wrong track.
Yeah, we, we have to, when's our decision point? And then the process that we need to go through before we can vote as to be kind of when those recommendations are delivered.
So remembering that there's a lot of public engagement between December to February as well. So it's not just within a board meeting, but there's public engagement sessions throughout that, that section.
So the only thing I'm going to say about this, the thing I'm going to, like, just an observation is I'm concerned this is just going to consume the entire, a lot of energy that could be focused on instruction and the schools and the classroom. And I think we have to be clear about what, what part of this work needs to be done because it impacts student learning and what would be nice to have or what maybe is second tier. So I can, I mean, just, this is a huge body of work. And I just can feel the energy and the politics behind it that could end up that we, we're not doing anything else. So I guess I, I'm, I'm interested in thinking about how we prioritize it so that we spend the political capital we need to spend to do the work that has the greatest impact and recognize that other stuff may go to year-two.
Well, we also have to think about our role. And I mean, if you're asking for more frequent feedback sessions, that's an opportunity for us to focus a lot of time on micromanaging this. And so we have to, and.
I'm just basing it on.
I'm talking to myself as well because I've been knee-deep in this and.
I'm just basing it on last years with the middle school where we, you know, we ended up walking back a whole host of decisions we, we made after we, we made them. So I, I just, there's, any, if any movement we're going to make that is substantive, you know, I think it will be hard for the board not to be engaged because people are going to engage us. So I just think we should be really focused on what is the highest value, and maybe that's part of the, the very beginning of the process. What's the highest value, highest priority for moving the dial on student learning of all these things?
So when you said that, could we be spending our time, you know, more focused on what moves the dial for kids? And programming, isn't this about that though? I mean, we don't have equity in our programming for many reasons. And until we do this district-wide, I don't know that we're really going to get to that equity in programming, which is going to move the dial for kids. So, I mean, I, I hear your point, this could be really all-consuming. But if we don't do it right and we don't look at the entirety of it, then we're, we're not, I mean, it's going to be hard to really rethink. not, I mean, it's gonna be hard to really rethink and have the programming that we need and the locations that we need, in the buildings that we need. I mean, it is, it's a pretty large body, yeah.
We've kept a lot of programmatic decisions at bay because we didn't have this work done.
And I think you're right. I mean, Scott, what you're saying, it's, it's gonna be hard not to micromanage it. But it's a huge body of work and we have to figure out what that right balance is. But ultimately, I think that, you know, probably the, the outcomes, kids' outcomes are gonna depend on this.
Well, and for my part, I have to say, I think that the way we're going to get equitable programming is to decide to offer equitable programming and fund it accordingly. This work will help to make it more affordable. But ultimately, we've got 83 buildings. They've all got totally different capacities. And we're never gonna be able to equalize numbers, let alone provide an equitable collection of students to give an equitable set of offerings of programs. I, I think it has to start with the commitment.
I wonder before we get into too much farther discussion if we could finish the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. But Julie, to your point on, on board engagement, we're happy to, to engage the board as often as the board would like. We'd also like to point out, there's, there's plenty of opportunities for the board to come out to workgroup sessions, to open houses, and observe and engage in the process as well. Did you want to speak to the community engagement?
Community engagement, the key words that we have at the top there are authentic, targeted, and efficient for the first year's community engagement. We're interested in making sure that we have an authentic community engagement process. And that really means two-way process. It means listening as well as talking, getting information out, but also seeking feedback. For the first year, for the reasons that Tyler has mentioned, we envision it being targeted. I noticed that the first news coverage of this said it was gonna affect 40,000-plus students in the district. And certainly, the first year won't, it won't have that kind of effect. The decisions to be made as a result of what happens in the first year will be a, a smaller subset of that. So targeted and then efficient, working within the resources that you have for community engagement. We're committed to reaching the stakeholders that are, should be involved in these decisions. The superintendent raised the question, who are the stakeholders? We'll work with the district staff to very carefully identify those, again, internally, teachers, staff, externally, students, families, neighborhoods involved in these decisions. We're focused on particular focus areas that we're gonna show you in a second here, and on topics and programs that are specific to those geographic areas and decisions to be made by you just a year from now. And at the same time, have district-wide communications because, as it's been pointed out, you know, this is a comprehensive program. Everything we do in the district affects some, somebody, someplace else in some way. So we want to make sure that everybody understands that this potentially, maybe not this year, but potentially, can affect them, their families in the future. So we want to get that message out as well, but not mislead people that, to think that, you know, there's something imminent that will affect them and their lives and, or their students' lives.
So here, here is a snapshot that, that district staff put together on really this, this direct, directly impacted schools, multi-year agenda, both issues and potentially affected schools. And so it kind of gets back to this question of, for us, as we were initially designing this, can we, can we do this in one shot, district-wide, in one year? And based on our experience and discussions with, with district staff, we said, let's, let's find those high-targeted, high-priority areas and start there. There's a lot of work to do just to ingest and get up to speed on, on the district-wide, on the system and the enrollment capacities and programs. And we'd be much better suited if we can, if we can identify some initial priorities to get done this year for year two and anything that follows. And to Claire's point, some of these facilities also come online at, at different times. And so being aware of when, we need to make shifts as well in aligning those with our priorities year to year. So it gets to our year one recommendations. As I mentioned, completing a district-wide baseline analysis on enrollment capacity and program, is that absolutely necessary? It allows us to, to have the foresight, district-wide, to make sure we know what program and enrollment and capacity levels are. And to make sure that, to the extent possible, we aren't, as I mentioned, making any, making any changes in year one that may negatively impact us trying to make changes in, in year two. Last thing we want to do is be here, back again, year two, affecting the same communities. We want to focus the analysis on three, and public processes within three high-priority areas. And I'll go through these one at a time. As Clark mentioned, in doing so, conduct an authentic and targeted engagement plan and then really build momentum and support for later evaluate, later evaluations and subsequent years of priorities. Area one is the Franklin Cluster Elementary-Middle Schools. Area drivers really is Kellogg to be completed in 2021, 22, and then overcrowding it at Bridger Elementary. And you'll see that we put these as just general areas. It's too, too soon in the process. And we hope to come back with, with the year one priorities, April 1st, to be able to actually geographically contain these areas a little bit more. Did not want to try to do that now because we just, we haven't seen any information. It's hard to say how much we can contain that. Again, experience has shown that sometimes you can contain it and sometimes there's, there's a little trickle-down effect and it begins, it's hard to make the numbers work until you go a little further out than what you initially had, had anticipated doing. Area two is Jefferson Cluster Elementary-Middle School. Area drivers are overcrowding at Fabian. Under enrollment, it's MLK Elementary. And then Vernon Grade's configuration. And then area three is the Roosevelt Cluster, really the driver, main drivers being overcrowder, overcrowding at Cesar Chavez Elementary School as well. So again, we're, we're trying to, trying to pick what we think is doable in the first year, that's high priority for the district, and to make sure that we can be, be successful. Because I think for us, again, going in and trying to do a district-wide adjustment year one would, would be a handful at this stage. Yeah, go ahead.
So if you assume we've already, Kellogg's on its way, you do these areas, one, two, and three. What middles, what K8s with under-enrolled six eights, what we still have left?
That's a good question. Or a question for Sarah.
Yeah.
Good evening, Judy Brennan. Don't go far. You would still have K8s in, well, it's hard to say because we're not sure how many of the K8s that are in the Franklin-Madison cluster that will, will be touched by Kellogg. So that's a really important part of this first year.
It will be touched by Kellogg.
By Kellogg. So it, that's where the bulk of the K8s are left in the districts. And it'll depend on what the scope, the full scope and containment of that project is. If Aster, Cesar Chavez are touched, and Vernon, all you have left are the larger K8s in the Grant Cluster, Beverly Cleary, and Laurelhurst.
Alameda.
Oh, no, I know.
Yeah.
So where's Lent, Arleta, Marysville, and Harrison Park?
Adjacent to Kellogg.
So those would all go to
Well, that's, so, so that's the work.
Because
So you've got Creston as well. You have Creston, Lent, Bridger, Harrison Park, Marysville are all still in K configuration.
So three to four more schools than can likely fit in there.
We're, we're missing Binnsmead. I mean, so we used to have a middle school that we haven't taken back.
Okay, I'm gonna, we're getting into weeds.
Okay, well, I guess I have, if part of this, this is
We all have issues. So let's, can we let him get through the
Sure.
Before we start ripping it apart?
We're almost done.
I was just asking a question.
So year one opportunities, we do see with taking a, a very laser-focused approach on priorities is that we can establish, again, this baseline understanding of district-wide enrollment, program, and facilities, which is gonna serve us well beyond year one. And again, if year two PSU updates the forecast, updates the enrollment, we would continue to update that along with facilities to have kind of a real-time view. Balancing enrollment with school capacities, obviously. Continue the implementation of K8 to middle school transition. Increase the number of robust multi-strand programs and improve the balance between DLI and neighborhood programs. Future year priorities, plan for school facilities coming online in the future as those are staggered out. Balance enrollment for high schools and in the remaining areas. Continue the shift to multi-strand programs. Continue balancing between DLI and neighborhood programs and evaluate sighting of district-wide focused programs. So we're saying those, whether those are year two or, or beyond, we're saying those are our future year. Now you can ask questions and tear us apart. Please.
Okay, now we rip it off. I would just like to reiterate my opinion that I can't see any way that it would make sense to postpone the, our internal evaluation of focus option programs onto year two. Because it has, it is integrally related to the analysis that is essential in year one. We can't make any determinations without also evaluating those questions. So for that not to be included at the outset here is very troubling to me.
And, and
Even though it's our work, but a reference to how integral that is.
And I would say it's not just the sighting of focus option programs and
Programmatic recommendations.
Programmatic recommendations for focus options, magnets, I mean, you name it.
Which, which greatly, which pull from surrounding neighborhoods and greatly impact where the boundaries should be.
And
And occupy whole buildings.
Everything is connected to everything else.
Right.
And, and
So
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I remember at the beginning, Claire asked us, you know, what's missing? And, and so I, I think, just feeling that we're really negative, and I want to reframe a little bit, that, you know, they're coming to us to kind of ask us for our input. So, so they're in an opportunity, instead of troubling, maybe the opportunity is we should be looking at focus options in this first year. So, you know, our guests, I'm thinking, they come and sat through our board meeting. And so we want to share, you know, our opinions in a positive way, I hope.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, can I, I want to build on that just for a second. So I think what you're witnessing, just, just so you know, this has been a topic that has consumed this district for many years, has consumed a number of us for many years. So we all have views. Most of them are not friendly. So with, I, I think we're all gonna try, we're all gonna try to have our best behavior. But you should, just so you know, you should be prepared that, you know, some of us are gonna fail at having good behavior on this one. And it's not intended to be negative. It's just, this, this is a very emotional topic for a number of people. You know, some of us up here, many people in the audience out in TV land, so.
I would say that the reason that it's, it's emotional for good reason, because any year we delay for kids who are in insufficiently resourced buildings or, you know, got the short shrift in one way or another, is a, is a denial of opportunity for those kids.
But they're asking for our feedback, so
Okay, here's my feedback. Since now is the time. I think any plan that doesn't move, with the exception of Kellogg, which we know that's gonna be sequenced when the building opens, that doesn't move all of our kids back into a middle school configuration will really miss the mark. So especially if you think about, I mean, I'm just looking at the map of the district. And, you know, it's, it's the kids who need the most supports who are not going to be in, in, in middle schools. So my vote would be to prioritize that as a district, as a district-wide priority. And looking, you know, at the, the west side and with the exception of Skyline, you know, they're all in, you know, healthy, thriving middle schools. And a lot of the higher SES neighborhoods have the same thing. So I think my focus would be really concentrating on getting that piece done so we can say that we've got our, all our kids in an equitable middle grades experience.
Well, the same could probably be said for DLI programs and looking at the single strands versus, you know, what do we do with that? Because those single strands that are highly impacted with kids, many kids on IEPs or with issues. So how do we prioritize then? Because, I mean, they're all gonna impact some group of kids greatly.
So I look at DLI's, I mean, I guess I would say, I think there's other solutions besides just boundary changes that, I mean, we, we've created those. And we created them in many cases without, without doing boundary changes, but by programmatic changes. So what, what tool, other tools do we have besides boundary changes?
This is why we need to focus on, can I ask an actual question?
Kipson?
So, so I'm looking at year one opportunities. And, and the first bullet is establish baseline understanding of district-wide enrollment programs and facilities. Balance enrollment with school capacities. Okay. Okay, so here's my question. At the end of year one, are you, are you thinking that you're going to have this kind of, you know, grand vision of what we're gonna end up with? Like where we're, where we're headed? But you want to phase the actual, any actual changes or not?
I think it's a great question. I think, so our intent with, with, with the baseline understanding is we have, we have to understand the entire system. And with that, we will know where there's constraints and opportunities throughout the district. And with, with district staff help, we'll know where there are opportunities or programmatic changes that would best suit the students. So with that, I think we'll have some ideas of where we think things can be adjusted elsewhere. But the intent is, year one is to, is to focus on a subset or something that's tangible year one to get done, knowing that we'll have a broader perspective district-wide on where there are opportunities and constraints.
So here's So this is what we set out to do 10 years ago.
Right.
And the first one went fine. It was two schools adjacent to each other. We moved a boundary, done. The second one blew up, had to be delayed a year. And the third one, I can't use that word.
Did not go well.
And, and that's part of the PTSD you're seeing that getting triggered here. And we had a lineup of, a very diverse lineup of community members saying, you need to do everybody all at once when it comes to boundaries. Because if you change one boundary here, that's gonna affect the school that's not in here. And what's to say that that school ended up short?
Right.
Or if you go ahead with a boundary change that seems urgent, but then you have to come back the next year and say, well, do we want that DLI program there or not? Or that focus, we're gonna change that focus option program, maybe we'll move it over here. That changes boundaries. So I, I'm still waiting to be talked out of, we need to do a plan that includes specifying what is exactly happening in every building in terms of the program. program, the grade configuration. That plan will have to be implemented over a couple of years.
Bingo.
And we can, and I think some of the hotspots you picked out are, yeah, those are the ones that are going to demand immediate attention. And in other areas, we're going to move a boundary a couple blocks. And it's, it's, yes, people want to be engaged in that, but it's not, it's not a hair-on-fire kind of thing. So specifically with Harrison Park, that's the only available middle school possible building right now in that area. If we make that a middle school, the neighborhood K five is now a focus option. So you either leave that focus option there, which continues to drain the surrounding neighborhood schools, which means they have to have bigger catchment areas, and your walkability is affected. And where are those neighborhood kids going to go for K five? Not to mention the Chinese immersion program that's just starting out there. You've got all those parts. We got to figure those out all at once, and then stage, that's, and I'm sorry if this is down in the weeds, but this is our lived experience here.
We're very well aware of the trickle-down effect, and how it's easy to go with the best intent, and just changing a small area, and how you realize very quickly that's not...
I would really like to echo what Director Bailey just said. From my lived experience, that is absolutely true. And I don't want to belabor the point too much, but the different iterations of questions that you're looking at engaging at over time, they're all cross-connected with the same schools. So you're going to end up monkeying with the same school community year after year. Specifically, if you look at Bridger overcrowding, again...
Submersion.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Call location.
Yes, and it's right next to Harrison Park. And again, you convert Harrison Park back to a middle school. That means you have to go after the Clark Building. That means that the kids in the Clark Building, at Creative Science, the second biggest chunk of kids in Creative Science come from Bridger, but Bridger is full. The biggest cohort of kids from Creative Science come from Vestal. Vestal is full.
So can I, can I hold this off for a minute here? Because we could go through the whole district and describe all the problems tonight?
Yes.
But it is after ten o'clock. And I do believe that it's not helping us move forward at this point. So a couple of things that I want to just ask, is there anything else missing on the list other than specific building sites that have issues? We've got, so we do have a list of buildings under categories. Are we missing any categories? Are we missing any schools that need to go on those categories?
Again, I'd like to endorse what Constance said, focus options as a category. We've got to look at all of those, certainly.
I don't see access on here.
It's on there.
Is it on there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Also, there are a handful of buildings on, that are conceivably available in the future that are not on the list. Well, Applegate Rice, Wilcox, Sacagawea, they have different programs in them, but we have all heard repeatedly that they may move, we may want to move them, we may need them for specialized programs. Certainly, if we're putting Columbia on the list, we should have those there also.
Yeah. Good point. Okay, are you getting?
I think the other angle is special education, where we're hearing a lot of requests to do, you know, keep kids together in a cluster.
Yep.
So there's alignment within a cluster. And if you do, if you don't do that all at once, then we could get in a difficult place. That's like a sort of primary decision. If we do a piecemeal thing, then all of a sudden, oh, we should have had some self-contained classrooms there, so we have to change the boundary. We don't want to do that in year two after doing a year-one adjustment.
Okay. It's a quarter past ten, almost. So this is our first intro to this.
Welcome.
And this is your first intro to us, so, you know.
It is. Very nice to meet all of you.
I'm sure it is. So it's a little complicated, and there's a lot of history here, and there are a great many people who have been very engaged on this issue for a very long time. So I encourage you to reach out to people, and, because they're actually, there is actually, in addition to the emotion, once you get past the emotion, there's actually a lot of wisdom out there, because a lot of people have been thinking about this for a long time. So are you, have you gotten anything from us tonight that is actually usable for you?
So, one thing I'm walking away with is I think we should interview each one of you individually and make sure that we've gotten, so that we don't go through the thirty things that affect forty other things in another public meeting.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that we have all those ideas out from each one of you, so we have that captured in our work.
But the answer is yes, yeah. And we know all too well how interconnected the district are, and how all districts, how interconnected they are. We just want to make sure we can do it well. And at the end of the day, we're making the best possible decisions we can possibly make.
I would like to remind you of something that Director Moore says quite frequently, which is that we have earned our crazy. And a great deal of that has been from this subject. And, you know, in the movies, when they want to show that someone's personality is coming completely apart, and there is the room that is covered with photos, and every one of them has red threads stretching across to every other one, that's what the insides of all of our heads look like about boundary redraws.
On the other hand, after we get through this and really nail it, there's going to be a lot of people saying, awesome job, you guys.
Okay, so I'm going to...
That's what we intend to do.
I'm going to try to leave this on a happy note. So, you know, we've been doing this a long time, and we only know what we know, and what we know has not worked well. So I think you're, be prepared for resistance, but we need your expertise. We need you to help us get past all of this. So, thank you for taking this on.
Absolutely, yeah. Thanks for having us.
Okay.
Wait till you come back.
All right.
Don't leave us.
It will be interesting, that I can guarantee you.
Yes, absolutely interesting.
Okay, yeah. Anything else for the Go To The Order? Okay, we are adjourned.